Good afternoon, everyone. I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Also pursuant to Rule 42, I remind all in this chamber that no demonstration of approval or disapproval from members of the public will be permitted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Here.
Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Here.
Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Flynn.
Here.
Counselor Louise Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Peppin.
Here.
Counselor Santana.
Here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
And Counselor Worrell.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I want to thank everyone for being here. Happy Ash Wednesday. I also see that we have in the crowd with us State Senator Jamie Eldridge, State Senator... Where did he... Oh, Senator right over there. Thank you for being here with us today. Thank you for being in chambers. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy Reverend Dr. Pamela Haley-Gillard, invited by Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor. After the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Council President. Reverend Dr. Pamela Haley-Gillard is a native of Boston, raised in the Bromley Heath Housing Development, Jamaica Plain, Massachusetts. Relocating to New Orleans, Louisiana, in the late '70s, where she answered the call to ministry and serve the people of God until Hurricane Katrina destroyed her home in 2006. Pamela was licensed and ordained by Pastor Dwayne Johnson of Outreach of Truth Ministry in New Orleans, Louisiana. Inspired by the Reverend Leanna Jones, Mother Mildred C. Haley, and Grandmother Mary M. Younger, Pamela has a passion for the people of God and desires to meet as many of their needs spiritually and physically as possible. She enjoys preaching, teaching, healing, and deliverance, and prophetic evangelizing, restoration of families through loss, conference, and seminar facilitator, and whatever she's asked the Lord of the Lord to do. Her assignment has led her to the Morning Star Baptist Church, where she proudly serves on the ministerial staff under the leadership of Bishop John M. Borders III since 2006, and she is also a first-time author of 90 Days of Deeper Life. She's a 2002 graduate of Gordon Conwell and holds a 2020 honorary doctorate degree from the Heart Bible Institute University. There's also a personal story and a connection I have with Reverend Haley-Gillard that I just learned about just a couple of weeks ago. So her mother is Mildred Haley. As Counselor Weber, I'm sure you're very familiar with the renaming of Bromley Heath. And I was homesick a couple of weeks ago with the flu, and I was watching the news, the New England Cable News, and they were doing a piece on Mildred Haley and all of her advocacy. And they talked about how she would bend the ear of the local politicians at that time, and they flashed a photo up. And I'm lying in bed, and I think I'm hallucinating right at this point with the high temps, and I go, "That's my father on the television, standing next to Mildred Haley." And so they showed two different pictures. And so when Mildred came today, I said, "This is really a lot of history combining itself where my father and your mother would get together and collaborate to make this city better." And the only reason she's here today is because she married Jessica Raya from my office, who said, "Oh, I think I've got somebody for clergy." So we just learned about this all, but that connection in itself was very special to me. And I'm sorry for stealing from Amater Pan Church, Counselor Peppin. I know that I overreached. It's not in District 3. Sorry for stealing of the daughter of Mildred Haley in Jamaica Plain, Counselor Weber. But again, this personal connection, it really is truly an honor to be with you, and I know that our parents would be proud that we're up here together, still continuing their work. So Reverend, please, the floor is yours.
I feel like we're brothers and sisters. Good morning, everyone. And I just thank God for being here. I give God the praise for allowing us to witness a brand-new day full of hope, possibilities, and insights. As we assemble here on this Ash Wednesday, the beginning of our Lent season, I ask God to forgive us of our sins and to forgive those who have sinned against us. I ask God to look upon our 13 council members, who God knows by name, and we do too. Counselors Ruth Z., Henry, Julia, Erin, Gabriella, Edward, John, Brian, Enrique, Benjamin, Tanya, Sharon, and Liz. May the Spirit of wisdom rest upon you. Discernment be your guide, and unity be the glue that binds you together. I pray that your decisions are fair and just and centered around those that you serve, and that you always show kindness and concern for those who depend on you. You are their voice, providing resources, public safety, and tackling the hard issues to the communities that you represent, recognizing your limitations because we all have them, and knowing when to call on the great name of our Lord and Savior. I pray that every phone call, every encounter, express the unique gifts and talents that you bring to this council. I pray for Maia Wu today, and that the hand of God be with her, your constituents, and all who will witness the changes, small and large, that you make. I thank you for your service. I thank you for your courage. I pray for your families and the future of the city of Boston. In the words of the prophet Micah, it says, "But he's already made it plain how to live, what to do, what God is looking for in men and women." It's quite simple. Do what is fair and just to your neighbor. Be compassionate and loyal in your love, and don't take yourself too seriously, but take God seriously. Another translation says, "To be fair, just, merciful, and to walk humbly with your God." Together, we can do this. May God bless you all in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. May He be with you. May He challenge you, and may we do it together. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
We will not recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Reverend, for being here with us. I'll see you at church. So for today, we have two presentations, one from Counsel Weber, Mejia, and myself, honoring today's Day of Action in Solidarity with Immigrant Communities and supporting resolutions, and one from Counselor Worrell honoring the Christmas Addicts. We had a rally outside today in support of our mayor, who is currently testifying in DC. And I also wanted to... We had a rally outside, and I wanted to shout out people who I was remiss to mention were with us. We had staffers from Senator Markey's office, and they're also here with us, so thank you for being here with us. And we had staffers from Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley's office, no stranger to this chambers where she got her start. Thank you so much for being with us. I'd first like to start out by calling Counsel Weber and Counsel Mejia and our advocates up to the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, first, I just want to thank all my colleagues and everyone here in attendance today for standing out outside today. You know, I think, you know, in times like this, you know, we need to stand together. And, you know, I think we showed, not just the city, but the whole country, that the city is not going to back down, and we're going to stand up for our neighbors. You know, so I... You know, I'm proud to stand here with Council President Louis Jean and Counselor Mejia, you know, in support of all the work that our advocates are doing, and that, you know, call-out work being done in the State House right now. Our state leaders, Senator Eldridge has filed a Safe Communities Act, which would function like the Boston Trust Act and prevent cooperation between our state officials and ICE. You know, I strongly support that. We have another bill filed by Senator Gomez, which is the Immigrant Legal Defense Act, which would provide legal services or funds for legal services for folks trying to legalize their immigration status or who are otherwise in an immigration proceeding, who have not committed a serious crime. I think we should support that. In addition, we have a dignity in detention state bill, which is pending, which would prohibit our law enforcement officers from engaging in these 287G contracts and serving as detention centers. I think there was news recently that the federal government's contracting to build basically an internment camp, a detention center, in New Jersey. We should make sure that is not happening here in our state. You know, and part of this work is not just for our friends and neighbors, but all of the workers here in Boston. You know, I've been proud to stand as a workers' rights advocate alongside 1199 SEIU, you know, and all of our other unions here in Boston, because without their members, you know, our city would not function, and I'm proud to stand alongside them. So, you know, I just want to thank everyone for being here. I guess Counselor... Madam President, next, or Counselor Mejia?
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Weber. Next, Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
I also want to give a shout out to Mira and all the advocacy that they've been doing on this front. I first would like to thank everyone who came out to our standout rally today in solidarity with immigrant communities. This idea came from a roundtable discussion that our office hosted, but prior to that, we had been in communication with MiHente, a national organization that has been doing a lot of work around pro-immigrant issues. And the idea was... Came to be because we wanted to support our mayors, who are going to be testifying in DC. And I was so incredibly grateful to Mira, ACLU, and the host of other organizations that said, "Yes, let's fight for immigrant communities." So I just want to acknowledge them. And Mira was one of our partners. Mira not only showed up to the roundtable, they let us know about the Immigrant Defense Act that they were supporting and urged everyone in attendance to join them in that fight. As it passed through the State House, we immediately said, "Let's go." And so I'm just really pleased and grateful to my colleagues, Counselor Weber and Counselor Louise Jean, for always taking the lead. And I want to just acknowledge and affirm how important it is for us in this moment in time to recognize that immigrant communities are here to stay. I often talk about the fact that, you know, my mom was undocumented when I was growing up, and I know there's a lot of anti-immigrant sentiment, but I'm here to say that the attacks that are happening on the federal level, they're coming for all of us. And if we're not standing with each other and solidarity with one another, we're all going to find ourselves in spaces and places that we don't need to be. And while I do appreciate this opportunity to have the mic, I would be remiss if I don't uplift the fact that in 2016, my little daughter was six years old, and I was afraid to wake her up. And the first question that she asked me after we realized that the Trump number 45 at the time had won, the first question she asked me is if we were going to have to leave this country. And that will forever be in my heart. And because I didn't... I wasn't born in this country. I became a naturalized citizen. I am this country. Okay? And this is the moment. And this is our moment. This is our moment to recognize that we can't keep conquering and dividing and fighting each other. Let's stand united.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Mejia, and thank you again to everyone who is outside. Thank you to my colleagues for filing this. I think the rally was great. It was also a reminder, like Counsel Mejia just said, that it's not a zero-sum game. There's enough for all of us, and we can all make sure that we are supporting each other and that we are looking out for our neighbors. So I just want to thank all of Mira Coalition. I want to thank 1199 SEIU. So there's a resolution that I'm proud to be co-sponsoring alongside Counselors Mejia and Counselors Weber regarding state legislation. And I have a resolution denouncing President Trump's actions on temporary protective status to cancel it for our Venezuelan brothers and sisters and for our Haitian brothers and sisters. I also have to say that there is no clapping in chambers, although I do agree. Thank you for also standing with our communities, because these are our neighbors. These are the people who are contributing to our economy, who are holding up the healthcare industry. So I want to thank Anna Alonzo and Juan and everyone with the TPS Committee. I want to thank Pastor Kiki and Dr. Gabo for all they do for the TPS community and all they do for Haitian immigrants, for all immigrants. And I also wanted to call up Senator Eldridge if you wanted to say a few words on the bills that we are sponsoring today. So Senator Eldridge, you have the floor.
Thank you, City Council President. State Senator Jamie Eldridge, proud Senate sponsor of the Safe Communities Act. And I want to thank the counselors for proposing this resolution to support not just the Safe Communities Act, but the Immigrant Defense Act and dignity, not deportation. And I'll just say that there really is a movement across the state to support this legislation, but it began here in Boston and specifically in Boston City Hall with the first passage of the Trust Act, which is a similar version to the Safe Communities Act. That legislation that was passed just before Donald Trump last became president was the spearhead for to file the Safe Communities Act back in 2017. So I'm grateful for the city council's leadership. Thank you to all the allies who are here, and this will greatly help in getting this legislation passed on Beacon Hill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Eldridge. If we could have... We have great coalition here from 1199, Mira, ACLU. If we could have Maroni from Mira come and just speak, and ACLU come and speak quickly, that'd be great, and we'll have Dr. Gabo on behalf of TPS.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. I won't have much to say other than to say we are really grateful that you are voting on this resolution to support, to endorse the Safe Communities Act and the Immigrant Legal Defense Act. As I said in my speech earlier, I think this is a first step to show the country that Boston is a city that welcomes immigrants and that we will not be backing down. So thank you for showing our leadership by endorsing these bills. As I should also mention, dignity, not deportation, is something that Mira also supports, so thank you for your support on that as well.
Thank you very quickly. On behalf of the ACLU, I want to thank the city council for considering this resolution with this trio of bills that we hope that the state legislature will take up today. You know, there's not much we can do about the federal government, but there's a lot we can do here at home, here in our city, and our state can also take action to protect immigrants across the state, so Boston can lead the way, but the entire state can benefit from these protections for immigrants. Thank you so much.
Dr. Gabo?
Good morning, everyone. Dr. Gabo, UC Immigrant Family Services Institute, we are so, so grateful to all of you for the work that you are doing, because again, we believe that immigrants are our best assets. And the more we work with them, the more we protect them, the more that we keep them safe here, the better it is for all of us. So again, we are immigrants. We are doing our work every day in the hospital, driving the kids to school, you know, taking care of the elderly, doing everything in our power to support the economy. So we are here to stay. We're not going anywhere. So thank you for fighting on behalf of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gabo, and we have this resolution. This is the TPS resolution. We are presenting it today, and we have this presentation. We'll be voting on it at the top of motions, orders, and resolutions, so hopefully in less than an hour. So thank you to everyone for being here, for all of your work. If I could call my colleagues up for a photo?
That means y'all, come on, colleagues, let's go, because we got a long agenda here today, everybody.
Long agenda, but we're trying to get through it as quickly as possible. Don't read until we approve the resolution. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Oh, and I was remiss to say that Counselor Coletta Zapata wasn't up here, but is a co-sponsor on the TPS resolution, so thank you so much. We are moving on to our next presentation, that is Counsel Worrell in honor of Christmas Addicts. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor in five minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone, and happy Christmas Addicts Day. Today, I had the opportunity to celebrate Christmas Addicts Day and the anniversary of the Boston massacre at the old State House, and I want to give a shout out to everyone that was involved in that event. I want to shout out Ms. Arnold in the eighth grade class from Boston Latin School. Also want to shout out, yes, Nat Shealy and Ed O'Connell of the Revolutionary Spaces, Jim Bennett, State Rep. Michael Witz, our fourth graders from the Elliott School, Jim Holmes, Colonel Henry Knox of the Color Guard, and Haroon Rashid and the Friends of Christmas Addicts, who have been the driving force behind all of the Christmas Addicts commemorations we have done in the past two years. Christmas Addicts was a Bostonian, a revolutionary, and the first to give his life for the nation's freedom. Yet, for too long, his story has been overlooked. His legacy is a reminder that Black and Indigenous Americans have always been at the forefront of the fight for justice, shaping the history of this country from his very first battle of independence. Addicts was not just a bystander in history. He was a leader, a fighter, and a symbol of independence. At a time when the colonies were still debating their place in the British Empire, he took a stand, unarmed but unwavering, confronting the forces of oppression head-on. Today, we are making his sacrifice, making sure his sacrifice is not forgotten. Last year, my office filed a hearing order for the creation of a Christmas Addict statue in downtown Boston, and we've made some progress on a permanent monument. We're hoping that by 2026, a temporary piece of art will be in place for the nation's 250th anniversary, and by 2030, Boston will proudly stand up a permanent statue honoring Addicts in the time for the city's 400th anniversary. In addition to the city again recognizing today as Christmas Addicts Day, we have added more to the celebration, and this is an idea that was born from Haroon. And that idea was to do an essay competition, which included Boston Latin School. So this is the first Christmas Addicts commemoration essay competition, and the idea was to make sure that the next generation of leaders understand the fight and also understand the impact that Addicts had on this country. So now, I'd like to introduce the winners of the essay competition, and if the Friends of Christmas Addicts could come up, and also Nat could come up too. In third place, we have Elias Valencia. Elias, that's a strong name. I like that one. My son's named Elias. Elias, congratulations. In second place, Noel Lu. And our first-place winner in our first Christmas Addicts commemoration essay competition is I'd like to invite up the Friends of Christmas Addicts, Nat, Ms. Arnold as well. Yeah, come up here, yeah. And I want to give Haroon an opportunity to say a few words, and if our young people wish to speak, I'd like to pass the floor to you as well.
It's an honor to stand here at the city council. This is a place that makes things happen in the city of Boston, and we are so proud and thankful that you made this happen, gave us an opportunity to give, number one, more information to young people about history that was kind of scrubbed, and now there's a new version of the history. Many people knew about Christmas Addicts. They knew about what happened to him, but very few knew why he sacrificed his life the way that he did, being the circumstances in which he was. And we have come to a conclusion, especially with something like this essay competition, which, by the way, next year will be citywide. It will not be just one school. We intend to have this movement go throughout the city of Boston and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so that all people who live here will know and can recognize the value of the first person who died for equal human rights. So that being said, thank you so much, and it's an honor to be in this council to represent these young people and the Friends of Christmas Addicts.
Now, we'll hear from one of our young people.
I would just like to say again how grateful I am for this opportunity and that I'm thankful that Revolutionary Spaces and the Friends of Christmas that Revolutionary Spaces and the Friends of Christmas Addicts Association can once again demonstrate how important Christmas Addicts was as an American hero, and how important he was to history as a whole. I think it's a great opportunity for everybody of the city of Boston and for everybody involved in both associations.
Now, I'd like to ask my council colleagues to come up for a picture.
On behalf of the ACLU, I want to thank the City Council for considering this resolution with this trio of bills that we hope that the state legislature will take up today. You know, there's not much we can do about the federal government, but there's a lot we can do here at home, here in our city, and our state can also take action to protect immigrants across the state, so Boston can lead the way, but the entire state can benefit from these protections for immigrants. Thank you so much.
Dr. Gabo? Good morning, everyone. Dr. Gabo, if see Immigrant Family Services Institute, we are so, so grateful to all of you for the work that you are doing, because again, we believe that immigrants are our best assets, and the more we work with them, the more we protect them, the more that we keep them safe here, the better it is for all of us. So, again, we are immigrant, we are doing our work every day in the hospital, driving the kids to school, you know, taking care of the elderly, doing everything in our power to support the economy. So, we are here to stay, we're not going anywhere. So, thank you for fighting on behalf of all immigrants, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gabo, and we have this resolution, this is the TPS resolution. We are presenting it today, and we are, have this presentation. We'll be voting at it, on it, at the top of motions, orders, and resolutions, so hopefully in less than an hour. So, thank you to everyone for being here, for all of your work. If I could call my colleagues up for a photo? That means y'all, come on, colleagues, let's go, because we got a long agenda here today, everybody. Long agenda, but we're trying to get through it as quickly as possible. Don't, don't read before we approve the resolution. You hear? Yes. Yes. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Oh, and I was remiss to say that Counselor Claudia Zapata wasn't up here, but is a co-sponsor on the TPS resolution, so thank you so much. We are moving on to our next presentation, that is Counselor Orell, in honor of Christmas Addicts. Counselor Orell, you have the floor in five minutes.
Senator, thank you for being here, I work for Counselor Levin. Good afternoon, everyone, and happy Christmas Addicts Day. Today, I had the opportunity to celebrate Christmas Addicts Day and the anniversary of the Boston massacre at the old State House, and I want to give a shout out to everyone that was involved in that event. I want to shout out Ms. Arnold in the eighth grade class from Boston Latin School, also want to shout out, yes, Nat Shealy and Ed O'Connell of the Revolutionary Spaces, Jim Bennett, State Rep. Michalowicz, our fourth graders from the Elliott School, Jim Holmes, Colonel Henry Knox of the Color Guard, and Haroon Rashid and the Friends of Christmas Addicts, who have been the driving force behind all of the Christmas Addicts commemorations we have done in the past two years. Christmas Addicts was a Bostonian, a revolutionary, and the first to give his life for the nation's freedom. Yet, for too long, his story has been overlooked. His legacy is a reminder that Black and Indigenous Americans have always been at the forefront of the fight for justice, shaping the history of this country from its very first battle of independence. Addicts was not just a bystander in history, he was a leader, a fighter, and a symbol of independence. At a time when the colonies were still debating their place in the British Empire, he took a stand, unarmed but unwavering, confronting the forces of oppression head on. Today, we are making his sacrifice, making sure his sacrifice is not forgotten. Last year, my office filed a hearing order for the creation of a Christmas Addict statue in downtown Boston, and we've made some progress on a permanent monument. We're hoping that by 2026, a temporary piece of art will be in place for the nation's 250th anniversary, and by 2030, Boston will proudly stand up a permanent statue honoring Addicts in the time for the city's 400th anniversary. In addition to the city again recognizing today as Christmas Addicts Day, we have added more to the celebration, and this is an idea that was born from Haroon, and that idea was to do an essay competition, which included Boston Latin School. So, this is the first Christmas Addicts commemoration essay competition, and the idea was to make sure that the next generation of leaders understand the fight and also understand the impact that Addicts had on this country. So, now I'd like to introduce the winners of the essay competition, and if the Friends of Christmas Addicts could come up, and also Nat could come up too. In third place, we have Elias Valencia. Elias, that's a strong name, I like that one. My son's named Elias. Elias, congratulations. In second place, Noel Liu. In our first place winner, in our first Christmas Addicts commemoration essay competition, is I'd like to invite up the Friends of Christmas Addicts, Nat, Ms. Arnold as well, yeah, come up here, yeah. And I want to give Haroon an opportunity to say a few words, and if our young people wish to speak, I'd like to pass the floor to you as well.
It's an honor to stand here at the City Council. This is a place that makes things happen in the city of Boston, and we are so proud and thankful that you made this happen, gave us an opportunity to give, number one, more information to young people about history that was kind of scrubbed, and now there's a new version of the history. Many people knew about Christmas Addicts, they knew about what happened to him, but very few knew why he sacrificed his life the way that he did, being the circumstances in which he was. And we have come to a conclusion, especially with something like this essay competition, which by the way, next year will be citywide, it will not be just one school. We intend to have this movement go throughout the city of Boston and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so that all people who live here will know and can recognize the value of the first person who died for equal human rights. So, that being said, thank you so much, and it's an honor to be in this council to represent these young people and the Friends of Christmas Addicts.
Now, we'll hear from one of our young people.
I would just like to say again how grateful I am for this opportunity, and that I'm thankful that Revolutionary Spaces and the Friends of Christmas Addicts Association can once again demonstrate how important Christmas Addicts was as an American hero, and how important he was to history as a whole. I think it's a great opportunity for everybody of the city of Boston and for everybody involved in both associations.
Now, I'd like to ask my council colleagues to come up for a picture.
Thank you very quickly. On behalf of the CDC, I would like to say again how grateful I am for this opportunity, and that I'm thankful that Revolutionary Spaces and the Friends of Christmas Addicts Association can once again demonstrate how important Christmas Addicts was as an American hero, and how important he was to history as a whole. I think it's a great opportunity for everybody of the city of Boston and for everybody involved in both associations.
Now, I'd like to ask my council colleagues to come up for a picture.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on Monday, March 3, 2025, to discuss, to discuss dockets number 0458, 0459. On behalf of the City Council, we had Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Braden, and Counselor Mejia present for the hearing. We also received a letter of absence from Council President Ruthie Louie-Jen. The BPS team provided a brief overview of MSBA, stating it is, it is, it is a state agency that provides additional funding to local districts to be able to conduct facility improvements and construct new school buildings. They stated that there are two main programs operated by MSBA. The accelerated program supports projects including replacements of roofs, windows, doors, and boilers in structurally sound facilities. The projects proposed for this include, the core program supports projects covering extensive repairs, renovations, additions, renovations in new school construction. The city submission for the core program this year would be Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. Committee members focus on timelines and various upgrades at the different schools, with a strong focus on Madison Park High School project timeline. I'm going to wait until after the Boston School Committee votes on Madison Park to have us vote on that docket, so just a heads up that that docket will be pulled from green streets, green sheets, likely on March 19. But today, I'm asking for a vote on the accelerated repair program docket. So, as Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, my recommendation is that docket number 0459 ought to pass, and that docket number 0458 stays in committee. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair, for holding this hearing, it was informative, and I do just want to stand to reiterate my disappointment that Madison Park is going to be having to wait much longer. I know we're going to wait for the school committee to weigh in, but I would never say no. I know this body passes the MSB funding, but that's just going to delay shovels on the ground, and I think we could have gone about this differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counselor Orell seeks passage of docket number 0459. All those in favor say aye, aye, all opposed say nay, the ayes have it, this docket is passed. Oh, Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0459. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Claudia Zapata?
Yes.
Counselor Claudia Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin?
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn?
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jen?
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia?
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Counselor Santana?
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber?
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Orell?
on that docket, if that could wait for the, when it comes up in motions, orders, and resolutions, but if you'd like to speak on another communication.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to respectfully ask if I could speak on 0604.
Okay. You have the floor in two minutes, because it's a communication, and we rarely speak on them, but you have the floor.
Okay. I'll be less than one minute. I just want to acknowledge Sally Glora, who's a neighbor of mine in South Boston. She was the first woman city auditor in Boston's history, a wonderful addition she will make at the Boston Retirement Board, someone to admire and respect for years, and she contributed greatly not just to my neighborhood, but to the city as well. So, want to acknowledge the continued leadership of Sally Glora. She'll be part of the Boston Retirement Board, and I just want to acknowledge her professionalism and hard work on behalf of the residents of Boston. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. These dockets, dockets number 0604 to 0610, will be placed on file. We're now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, could you please read document number 0458?
Document number 0458, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to submit a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority Core Program for Madison Park Technical Vocational High School pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 70B, Section 5. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies within the school facility that prevents Boston Public Schools from delivering their desired educational program.
Oh, and Mr. Clerk, if you could also please read document number 0459.
Document number 0459, message in order authorizing for your approval, in order authorizing the City of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority statements of interest for their accelerated repair program for the following schools: Boston Adult Technical Academy, Hurley K-8 School, Mildred Ave. K-8 School, Mendola Elementary School, Mary Lyon Pilot High School, Joyce Kilmer Lower School, Margarita Muniz Academy, Orchard Gardens K-8 School, Trotter K-6 Elementary School. The statements of interest describe and explain the deficiencies in the priority category for which the City of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Priority 5, replacement, renovation, or modernization of the school facility system such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Orell. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means held a hearing on Monday, March 3rd, 2025 to discuss dockets number 0458 and 0459. On behalf of the Administration, we have Brian McLaughlin, Senior Project Manager for Boston Public Schools; Del Laverne Stanislas, Chief of Capital Planning for BPS; Carlton Jones, Executive Director for Public Facilities Department; and Brian Ford, Chief Operating Officer of Boston Public Schools, testifying. From the City Council, we had Counsel Flynn, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Braden, and Counsel Mejia present for the hearing. We also received a letter of absence from Council President Ruthie Louie-Jen. The BPS team provided a brief overview of MSBA, stating it is a state agency that provides additional funding to local districts to be able to conduct facility improvements and construct new school buildings. They stated that there are two main programs operated by MSBA. The Accelerated Program supports projects including replacements of roofs, windows, doors, and boilers in structurally sound facilities. The projects proposed for this include the Core Program supports projects covering extensive repairs, renovations, additions, renovations in new school construction. The city submission for the Core Program this year would be Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. Committee members focus on timelines and various upgrades at the different schools with a strong focus on Madison Park High School project timeline. I'm going to wait until after the Boston School Committee votes on Madison Park to have us vote on that docket, so just a heads up that that docket will be pulled from green streets, green sheets likely on March 19th, but today I'm asking for a vote on the Accelerated Repair Program docket. So as Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, my recommendation is that docket number 0459 ought to pass, and that docket number 0458 stays in committee.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair, for holding this hearing. It was informative, and I do just want to stand to reiterate my disappointment that Madison Park is going to be having to wait much longer. I know we're going to wait for the school committee to weigh in, but I would never say no. I know this body passes the MSB funding, but that's just going to delay shovels on the ground, and I think we could have gone about this differently. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Counsel Orell seeks passage of docket number 0459. All those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Oh, Mr. Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0459. Counsel Braden?
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta Zapata?
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin? Counsel Fernandez Anderson?
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn?
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louie-Jen?
Yes.
Counsel Louie-Jen, yes. Counsel Mejia?
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Peppin? Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana?
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber?
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Orell?
Yes.
Counsel Orell, yes. Document number 0459 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0148?
Can you state that this one?
Oh, okay. Yes, apologies. I'll make sure to do that. Okay, so docket number 0458 will remain in committee, and docket number 0459 has passed unanimously with a 12, with 12 votes. Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0148?
Document number 0148, order for a hearing to discuss Boston Public Schools' fiscal year '26 budget.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Orell. Counsel Orell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means held its third working session on docket number 0148. In attendance was Counsel Weber, Counsel Peppin, Flynn, Murphy, Fitzgerald, and Braden. We received a letter of absence from Counsel President Louie-Jen. In the first two working sessions, we discussed RFI questions and budget priorities. I submitted a letter formalizing these priorities last week to Superintendent Skipper and the School Committee Chair Robinson. On Tuesday, we discussed those priorities as well as any other budget-related BPS questions. On BPS, we were joined by Superintendent Skipper, CFO David Bloom, COO Brian Ford, Senior Deputy Superintendent of Academics Linda Chen, Deputy Superintendent of Operations Sam DePina, Deputy Chiefs of Schools and Accountability Lindsey McIntyre, Deputy Superintendent of Equity, Family, and Community Investment Dr. Anna Tavares, Chief of Student Support Chief Corey McCarthy, Chief of the Office of Specialized Services KSL, and Chief of Multicultural and Multilingual Education Jamel Kamir. We discussed many topics, including reading specialists, reading curriculums used, dyslexia screening support, student support teams, a new approach to high doses tutoring, including a six-school pilot program this spring across three grades, hub schools, student support teams at each schools, the challenge with tracking homeless students above the age of 18, community partnerships, including St. Stevens Mentor Project and Katie's Closet, and the district's new approach to those partnerships, including its approach at the highest need schools with merged schools, as well as putting them on three-year contracts. In terms of parent mentoring in general, BPS described an estimated $100,000 cut-to-the-line item in FY '26. BPS also gave test cases of a day in the life of an inclusion classroom, as well as the reason for multilingual classrooms. They discussed how they reassessed every budget program of $5 million or higher for FY '26, and how federal funding might disrupt pipeline programs for employees, including the parent-to-teacher pipeline program. BPS shared that new data tracking has allowed for more reporting on post-secondary outcomes for students, as well as increased outreach for those who might have stalled on both the education and vocational tracks. Additionally, we learned that early college enrollment has increased from 140 to 790. I'd like to point to my colleagues, the hearing folder, which includes a draft of the budget book and all of the answers to our first round of BPS RFIs. This is a treasure trove of information, and I thank BPS for their cooperation in providing it. In terms of next steps, I await a response to my letter ahead of the March 12th School Committee meeting, and we will have BPS in for a two-day session of formal budget hearings on April 14th and 15th. We began this process back in November, and I think we've already seen that the Council's priorities are helping shape the BPS budget this year. I recommend that this docket remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orell. Docket number 0148 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0265?
Document number 0265, order for a hearing to discuss the preservation of historical artifacts in Boston Public Schools slated for closure or merger.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Education held its hearing on January 15th. We were joined by my council colleagues, Counsel Ed Flynn, Counsel Murphy, and Counsel Durkin. From the Administration, we had Kristin Lafti, City Archivist, City of Boston Archives, Brian Ford, the Chief Operating Officer for Boston Public Schools, Commissioner Robert Santiago, Office of Veteran Services, and Jessica Bitley, Deputy Director of Research with the Boston Public Library. It was a productive and informative hearing. It was great to hear from also from public testimony, and I'm going to allow, if any of the lead sponsors want to speak on this, but I suggest that this docket remain in committee for right now. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Santana, for a good hearing yesterday. And I want to thank Jessica Bitley from BPL, our new City Archivist, I guess not that new, Kristin Lafti, Brian Ford from BPS, who has been at several hearings lately, because he is the Chief Operating Officer in overseeing a lot of the merges, and also I'm just thankful to him for showing up and giving us the answers we need. And also, our very own Rob Santiago, our veteran commissioner. We had a wonderful conversation, and I really felt that there is a commitment to working together with the different departments, and I know that the panelists learned a lot from the community advocates who spoke up and really taught us about the rich history. And I know Counsel Flynn and I filed this a couple months back when Excel High, formerly South Boston High, was announced to be closed, and all of the important veteran artifacts that are in that building and buildings across the city. So I'm looking forward to the promise that there'll be an inventory of all of our schools across the city in what artifacts they hold, not just veteran artifacts, and also the community hearings that we're going to hold. Counsel Flynn has already committed to holding one in South Boston and learning from the neighbors, because many neighbors still live there who have family ties to these artifacts, and I think it's important to hear from them and find other places. One thing we spoke about is schools back in the '30s and '40s were more open for many different reasons that we all know, but nowadays, many people don't ever go into these buildings. So finding different permanent homes for them will probably be a great outcome from this exercise, so maybe putting them into our community centers, our local libraries, and just more forward-facing locations across the city. So looking forward to working with all of the departments going forward and making sure that we respect the rich history of our city as we merge and close schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to first say thank you to Counsel Santana for holding an important discussion and for his leadership. I want to say thank you to Counsel Murphy for bringing this forward. Honored to join her, and again, thank you to Counsel Santana, and also to the city administration team that was present, that provided some invaluable feedback to us on how we go forward. Excel High School, formerly called South Boston High School, is scheduled to close, and as Counsel Santana and Counsel Murphy have highlighted, there's some great artifacts, some great memorials to men and women from South Boston that have been in the United States Military and also in their junior ROTC program as well. We have a plan going forward based on the hearing that we had, but the City Archives is going to work with us to document what is at South Boston High School, Excel High School, and I'm going to have a neighborhood meeting in South Boston sometime in May where the community could come together and listen to some of the BPS team, the Archives team, also the Veterans Commissioner as well, and listen to them on how we're going to preserve history at South Boston High School and ensure that the veterans and their families, hundreds and hundreds of South Boston families, want to ensure that this history stays with the community. I have heard from my friend Kevin Conroy, who's a United States Marine. I've heard from the men and women at the Perkins Post, at the McDonough Post, at the Fitzgerald Post, the South Boston Allied Veterans Council. I have heard from a woman, Mary Ryan, a neighbor in South Boston. Her father was a Vietnam veteran. He was the commanding officer down at the Naval Air Station, but her grandfather was a World War II veteran. But anyway, I want to make sure that my neighbors in South Boston, their voices are heard in this process. I'm proud to represent them and looking forward to the hearing sometime in May. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This docket, docket number 0265, will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0254?
Document number 0254, order for a hearing to discuss long-term city job vacancies.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development held a hearing on docket number 0254, in order for hearing to discuss long-term job vacancies. The docket was sponsored by Counselors Orell, Fitzgerald, and Mejia, and was referred to the committee on January 15th. I'd like to thank Chief Financial Officer Ashley Groffenberger, Chief People Officer Alex Lawrence, BPS Chief of Human Capital Officer Francis Canty, and Boston Public Health Commission Chief People Officer Tanisha Peoples for participating in the hearing and providing us with very informative answers. I'd also like to thank my colleagues who attended the hearing, Counselors Flynn, Mejia, Orell, Murphy, Coletta Zapata, and Fitzgerald. The committee received letters of absence from Counselors Peppin and Braden. Lastly, I'd like to thank Shane and Ethan from Central Staff for doing a great job at the hearing. During the hearing, we were told that hiring was up this year compared to last, resulting in fewer vacant positions. We're informed about the various strategies the city is using to fill vacant positions, including offering wage increases for city workers at the lower end of the wage scale, making changes to employment by allowing workers to access paid sick and bereavement leave prior to six months of employment, in the case of BPS, eliminating nonessential positions and reallocating those funds back into schools. Some highlights from the hearing, the Boston Public Health Commission vacancy rate went from 16% last April to 11% now, and they will be hiring 12 additional EMTs. BPS has gone from filling 94% of their vacancies to filling approximately 96%. And, you know, another thing that we heard about, which I thought was informative, was how to examine the vacancy data when it comes to the budget. You know, we heard about the amount of salary savings that the city sort of builds into the budget process. For anyone who wasn't at the hearing, I urge them to review the testimony, because I think it'll help as we go into that process. You know, as Chair of the Committee on Labor, Workforce, and Economic Development, I recommend that this docket remain in committee, and I just want to thank the original cosponsors and invite them to speak if they want to. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The Chair recognizes Counsel Orell. You have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President, and thank you to the Chair of the Committee, and also to my cosponsors. As we prepare for the FY '26 budget department hearings, I just want to encourage everyone to review the transfer reports and year-to-date expenditures the Administration has provided. These reports will give us a window into how much funding was reallocated at the end of FY '24 and where spending is tracking for FY '25. Understanding these numbers will help us determine whether budgeted funds for permanent employees were fully utilized, or if departments are still operating with significant staffing gaps. One of the most pressing questions we need answered for is, how many vacancies do we still have across all city departments? Last year, we nearly saw 2,000 unfilled positions, with departments like BPD, BTD, and BPS experiencing the most severe shortages. We need updated data on whether those numbers have improved, and if not, what's preventing progress. Another major concern is retention. What are we learning from employees who leave city jobs? Are there trends in which departments struggle the most to keep staff, and do we have a plan to address those issues? And additionally, we need more transparency around the city's hiring process. How long is it taking to fill open positions, and are there bottlenecks in the system that need to be addressed? We covered a lot in yesterday's hearing, and again, I just want to thank Counsel Weber for his leadership on this matter, and I look forward to hearing from the Administration and how they plan to solve some of these vacancy issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Orell. This docket, docket number 0254, will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Pro Rule 39, a lead sponsor may have the floor for three minutes when a new file, when a new filed docket is introduced, and cosponsors may have the floor for two minutes. We will be taking two dockets out of order. My sincere apologies to the Clerk's Office, because I know it presents difficulties for you all when we take dockets out of order, and so, thank you. We will be first take docket number 0619, and then 0622. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could please read docket number 0619 into the record.
Document number 0619, Counselors Weber and Mejia offer the following: Resolution in support of immigrants' rights legislation, including the Safe Communities Act, the Immigrant Legal Defense Act, and the Dignity Not Deportations Act.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, we've spoken at length about this already. I just want to briefly review the state laws we're seeking to support with this resolution. The Safe Communities Act was put up by Senators James Eldridge and my state Senator Liz Miranda, as well as the House bill by Reps Manny Cruz and Priscilla Souza. It, just like the Boston Trust Act, it limits participation by state actors across the state and in other towns, and just, you know, supports our rights under the 10th Amendment not to have our local resources commandeered by the federal government for draconian police actions. So, you know...
Excuse me, there is no speaking in chambers other than from counselors. If there is no speaking from the audience, except for counselors are the only ones who are speaking. That is a warning. There is no speaking from the audience. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Yeah, like the Boston Trust Act, it doesn't stop federal immigration officials from doing their jobs, it just means our local officials, when somebody does not commit a serious crime, does not, you know, lend aid or use our resources to aid in those removals. We're also supporting the Immigrant Legal Defense Act, which is put forward by Senators Adam Gomez and Reps Dave Rogers and Frank Moran. The Immigrant Legal Defense Act, first of all, immigration law is incredibly complex. I have worked on immigration cases. It's, you need like a whole team of people to help you get all the, you know, everything right, and, you know, I don't think just anybody, you know, who needs help, you need to have specialized legal services for that help, and you're in a civil legal proceeding. This bill would establish a program that would allow for public and private funds to come in that would provide for low-income immigrants who are in deportation proceedings. You know, I spoke to Adam Gomez today, you know, this bill is in the, sort of, hasn't even been put into committee yet, but this, this bill would, you know, is not designed to protect people from criminal proceedings. It's primarily, according to Senator Gomez, designed to help people solidify their status. Maybe they're here under the TPS program, but for somebody who's in this complex legal process, not because of criminal violations, but because they've been caught up in a world where we're just targeting immigrants because they weren't born here, we're providing them with a program that, again, private and public funding would support them. The third one is the Dignity Not Deportations Act, which again is put up by Senators Gomez, Senator Gomez and Reps Barber and Rogers. Sorry, just one sentence. The Dignity Not Deportations Act would just prohibit state actors and municipal entities from entering into immigration collaboration and detention agreements with the federal government, essentially the other side of the coin of the Trust Act, where we're saying, you know, we're not going to allow our towns to serve as detention centers for immigrants. I would first, Madam President, I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counsel Mejia as a third sponsor.
Thank you, Counsel Weber.
Oh, yeah, well, could I do that first, and then...
Yeah, okay. Counsel Weber seeks to suspend the rules, add Counsel Mejia as a third original cosponsor. Counsel Mejia is so added. Counsel Weber, you have the floor. I do give a little bit more liberties around resolutions in terms of time, if you did want to...
I'm just, I'm just saying, I would like to suspend the rules and pass this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. And I want to thank you for filing this, and I know Counsel Mejia was also leading on filing this, and this is a really important matter. I want to thank Mira and ACLU for the work that you do. You're still here with us, as you were outside with us for the rally, for the work that you do to support our immigrant communities who are... communities who are our neighbors, and like Counsel Weber said, and like Senator Eldridge said, this is building off of our work here, the Trust Act that we have passed twice here on the City Council and that we unanimously reaffirmed in December. And also, as Counsel Weber stated, there are so many complexities involved in deportation proceedings, ensuring that people have the resources and the ability to get through that is really important. So, I want to thank him, I want to thank Senator Eldridge for being with us here today, and I know that this is important work that we need to partner with our state officials to make sure we get it done. Thank you, Counsel Weber, thank you Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counsel Weber for adding me as an original cosponsor. Yes, indeed, we have been working with Mira, and we're really happy to collaborate with you to get this to the finish line. So, this moment is calling for bold political courage and for the political integrity. I often hear from my colleagues that we support immigrants, that we stand with them and that they're all residents of the city. Well, we cannot say that, and then when we give ourselves the opportunity to take a vote and vote on behalf and in support of immigrants, we opt not to. This resolution declaring our support for bills that will provide basic protections of our immigrants is exactly the type of work that we should be doing. What it is saying that hundreds of immigrants you represent are going to be concerned that you wish to block this. In a matter of just two weeks, we organized hundreds of people to show up here in front of City Hall to stand in solidarity with those very immigrants that we are here to support. To not allow democracy to play out in this place, it's silencing us from the sidelines yet again. The City of Boston is a city of immigrants. Look no further than this Council to see the results of a city that welcomes all of us. Many of us are here, are children of immigrants, many of us are immigrants ourselves, and let us honor our roots and the spirit of this Council by bolstering our support of immigrants instead of upholding norms that aim to shut down the doors on them. I kindly ask my colleagues to not block this and to allow us to stand up and take a vote. And, you know, I think, I think I have a minute left, I just want to say that we need to really start recognizing that the rhetoric that comes in and out of spaces that are political do have unintended consequences in the way people see themselves or feel about themselves, and I think it's important that we utilize our microphones to be a bit more compassionate and understanding that there are a lot of people right now who are living in fear, and they're being criminalized and they're being treated as though the othering that we like to do here, and I think that this is an opportunity for us as a Council to stand united in support of immigrants, especially in the climate that we are all living in right now. We cannot continue to allow hate to drive the political discourse that we see. So, I am going to ask my colleagues, and while I appreciate the need to potentially want to have a hearing around this, there are things that I have seen in this chamber that we have voted on in support of, and I think that that's the type of leadership that this moment is asking for. And so, I am going to ask my colleagues to allow us to take a vote.
Thank you, and thank you Counsel Mejia for your leadership on this issue from when you started on the Council, so thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to say I didn't know that we were going to pull out of order, and I did have docket 0616, which I think would have went nicely before this, but we will get to that later in the hearing. This proposed resolution in support of immigrant rights legislation, including the Safe Communities Act, the Immigrant Legal Defense Act and the Dignity Not Deportations Act, address critical issues affecting our immigrant communities. It's important to note that the Safe Communities Act is currently under consideration in the Massachusetts Legislature and has not yet been enacted into law. Similarly, the Immigrant Legal Defense Act and the Dignity Not Deportations Act are also pending legislative action. Given the Boston City Council's role in enacting local ordinances and resolutions, it's essential to ensure that our actions align with existing state and federal laws. According to the City Council rules, any motion, order or resolution that conflicts with state or federal law may be referred to committee of the whole and shall not be further considered except upon report by that committee or decision of the Chair. Therefore, to proceed appropriately, I would recommend the following steps: referal to committee, move that this resolution be referred to the appropriate committee for further discussion and analysis, await legislative developments, monitor the progress of the Safe Communities Act, the Immigrant Legal Defense Act and the Dignity Not Deportations Act in the state legislature, and once these bills are enacted into law, the city can revisit this resolution to ensure alignment with state legislation. This approach, I believe, ensures that the Council's actions are legally sound and effectively support our immigrant communities in accordance with current laws. That being said, I do think what's being bold is when you stand up and you ask to pause and you ask for more information, but I do understand from the scrambling that went on as the Council meeting started that many people feel strongly about going to a vote, and so I'm not going to block this. I will allow it to go for a vote, but my plan is to refile this as a hearing order because I know that matters if they're filed in different forms, can be revisited. So, like I said, I filed docket 0616, which I thought was going to come up first because it was in the order of the agenda, to discuss and establish guidelines for the filing and adoption of Council resolutions, and this resolution, I think, is a very clear example. I believe that this body deserves all the information it can get on all matters, so I will refile this resolution as a hearing order. The Council meeting, I believe, is not the time to discuss and ask questions. A hearing is the place, and as we know, we've had several Council meetings that have gone late into the night because we've been having extended conversations about things I do believe should be in the hearing setting. I also want to say, I don't, I will never vote present, I don't want to take a present vote ever, I do think we've been elected to take hard votes, but my no vote today on this is that I'm going to wait till I have all the information I need to make a sound and educated decision on this, and at that point, after the hearing happens and I learn more and I follow closely what's happening at the state level, I can then share with the City of Boston how I feel about it. But a no vote today is not that I'm against it or that I have an opinion yet that I could form to make a sound decision, it's saying no, that I don't think it should go to a vote, but I do know from the conversations that some people are having that they really want to make a statement, and I know we've had that conversation about Eddie Crispin, we had the conversation about the dying librarian who's just asking for sick days, and many people voted present because they felt that it wasn't our place legally to weigh in, so I do just want to be clear, that's where I'm, what I'm going to be doing today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Actually, Counsel Flynn hasn't spoken. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I begin my comments, I do want to, I don't want to be disagreeable to my colleagues, I don't want to be disrespectful to my colleagues. I respectfully have a difference of opinion on the process, so I hope we don't take this as, as any way that I'm being disagreeable with anybody. Like our colleagues here, I support immigrants in search of a better life for themselves and the family. I'm also proud of my family's commitment, longtime commitment to supporting immigrants in the city. In fact, the Immigrant Gateway Memorial was enacted by my father, Mayor Flynn, as well as the Immigration Rights Unit now expanded to the Office of Immigrant Advancement. Today, I think it's important to have the opportunity to learn, in my opinion only, I'm not criticizing anyone, but in my opinion only, I would like to learn more about the at least five pieces of legislation before voting on it. I think, I think myself, I would like to have a conversation and learn, that's how I become a better city Councilor. I'm unsure if a hearing or hearings have been held yet at the State House, and I'm not going to ask that question to, to the makers just because I don't, I understand the process, the, it should be held in the committee and I don't want to get into a back and forth, so I don't have enough information on that. This legislation, in my opinion only, it will impact Boston residents and city departments. What city departments could they impact? Certainly the Boston schools, the Boston Police, the Law Department, Office of Immigrant Advancement, the Budget Department, Office of Emergency Management, Sheila Dillon's Housing Department. I highlight that because if we did have a hearing, it would, I would like to know from some of the department heads what impact this would have on housing, what impact would this have on social services. I support that, but I still would like to know the impact it has as well. Again, I don't want to be disagreeable, I don't want to be disrespectful, I just want to make sure I'm doing the best I can on behalf of my constituents. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin, then Counsel Braden, and then I'll, Counsel Weber, you'll have the floor. Counselor, and then Counsel Mejia. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I just want to thank Counsel Mejia and Counsel Louie Jean for being part of the organizing for today's rally outside of City Hall. I was proud to stand with you, and I hear and respect the points from Counsel Murphy and Counsel Flynn, but there's a bigger message here. There's a far bigger message here that has to do not with law, not with what's going to happen, or it's what's already happening. It's about the message that we're hearing from Washington DC towards people that unfortunately cannot speak for themselves because of how much they're scared. We know that, yes, we might be voting on something today, that it's state law or federal law, the other day, the people of Boston are suffering. We have so many immigrants that run this city, that make the cities proud, this city was built on immigration. There's a plaque outside by Mayor Flynn that says that this city was built by immigrants, and we will continue to be proud of that. And we know that what's happening right now in the presidential administration, we can see that as St. Augustine said, "An unjust law is no law at all," and I think that it's our job to stand for those people that are suffering right now, to stand for the people that are scared, and to clarify that it isn't when, it's not just the folks that got here last year or two years ago on some, any program that you make you think about, it's about people that have been here for years that are questioning their status at the moment. So, I encourage you to just do this with faith, do this with morality, with humanity, that there's people in this city that are suffering at this moment, and we need to stand with them. This is what this is about. It's about showing them that support, and that's why I'm going to stand here, I'm going to support this, I'm going to continue to fight for immigrant community, and I'm going to vote yes today, so thank you for putting us on the floor.
Thank you, Counselor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I also want to thank the folks who organized the demonstration in support of immigrant rights on the plaza this morning. I agree with my colleague Counsel Peppin that this is a really important resolution, it is a symbolic thing, resolutions are just that, just a resolution. I think it sends a message to our colleagues at the State House that this is an important issue for us, it's a very, very important issue. It's about human dignity and human rights, and I also feel that, you know, for those folks who are living in the shadows in our city, they don't, they don't want to hide, they want to be full, full members of our community, be able to go to church, go to school, go to their doctor's office without fear, and sadly, that's not the case right now. So, I want to stand in support of this resolution. We had a case in our neighborhood last week or the last couple of weeks where a father was going to work, he's a journeyman carpenter, he went to work, a hard-working man who, an immigrant undocumented, who wanted to go to work, is going to work to support his family, his two young kids, two teenage daughters in school, and he was, he was picked up by ICE. He's not a criminal, he's just a hard-working father trying to support his family and make a better life. He came from a country where, one of the most violent countries in the world, and he came here to make a better, safer life for his family. And he's been taken out of state, so it's very difficult. All of these, these new, new laws that the State House are going to be considering will enhance the life and safety of our immigrants in our city and across Massachusetts.
There is no speaking in from the audience? If you speak again, we will remove you from chambers. If you speak again, we will remove you from chambers. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate our...
Can, we are, can we please remove her from chambers? We are in a brief recess, we are in a brief recess, please remove her from chambers. Very much Counsel Braden for all the work that you have done and that you support. We are still in recess, but... From recess, Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I feel, I stand in support of our, of these, this proposed legislation to support our immigrants and so that they can live and they can dignity without fear. In this moment, we're all almost in, you know, the rapidity of the changes that are happening at the federal level on all, all areas of our life and our government are under attack. Eighty years of progress are under attack, and in this moment, it's really important to recognize the sanctity and the importance of our immigrants in the middle of all this chaos. And I think the other thing what I'm trying to say is, it's really important to give ourselves hope for the future, but also give our immigrant workers and folks who are living and working in our neighborhoods, who are our family members, their colleagues, we need to give them hope also, and this is a very, very, I don't like the word dark, but this, this is a very, very depressing moment in our country's history, and this is part of stepping up and sending a message to our people that we are not going to give up on those most vulnerable in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden, and thank you for always speaking so clearly on this issue. Counsel Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I was proud to attend today's rally outside. I want to thank Counsel Mejia and Counsel Louie Jean and all of the organizations that helped put it together. It was a beautiful demonstration of solidarity, and I have gotten hope from just seeing the sheer number of people that were there standing in solidarity with our immigrant neighbors. East Boston has always been a welcoming and inclusive neighborhood of immigrants. We were considered Boston's Ellis Island, welcoming immigrants from first Eastern Europe and then Western Europe, and now recently Central and Latin America, and, you know, I am proud to stand in support of this resolution, and I think, but last, last Council meeting, was it last week, I had talked about how I was grieving of the regression of, of certain issues in this society, in this country. I think like even in this chamber, I am seeing some regression that makes me sad, and I think those that are listening in should demand from their local elected leaders because we work for you, and regardless of your political party, we represent you, we are here to serve you, we are here to protect you, we are here to push forth and ensure policies that ensure safety, dignity, respect, justice, and this is a symbolic vote, but it means a lot, especially in this moment in time. So, for those that are listening in, demand courage from your elected officials, demand that they stand anchored in their values that they say they have, and hold them accountable. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counsel Gerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Not to sound like a broken record, but I want to begin by making one thing clear. I recognize the immense contributions of our immigrant communities to Boston. They are our neighbors, our workforce, and an integral part of the fabric of the city. At a time when immigration policies at the national level are failing and in many cases outright harmful, I understand why we must act at the state and local level to provide protections and resources. The issues addressed in this resolution today are complex, and they deserve a thorough and transparent public discussion. I agree with Counsel Murphy that thoughtful policymaking requires due diligence, and I believe that moving this to a hearing would allow us to engage in a more meaningful dialogue that leads to the strongest and more effective action. For me, moving this to committee is, and having a hearing is not about opposition or delay, it's about ensuring we take the time to fully understand the legal, financial and public safety implications. safety implications of these policies. It's about making sure we hear from all stakeholders, including those directly impacted. But with that being said, I appreciate the urgency of this situation, and quite honestly, I listened to the words of my friend Counsel Pepe in voting with morality. And it appears to be that the will of this, majority of this party is that we move forward on a vote today. I will vote yes on a, on this resolution. However, I do encourage all in all future resolutions as well, and I look forward to Counsel Murphy's later hearing for, about how we use resolutions. The education prior, rather than asking us as a body to vote on something that is not fully vetted or that we may not fully understand completely as the, maybe the makers of the resolution, for us to vote on it, I'm trying to avoid that situation in the future. And again, I just really hope that whatever the result of the vote is today, that we continue to have a hearing on it and discuss this, because this topic is complex, and it will need more conversation and more thoughtfulness on how we as the city align with both the state and federal policies and how we can best help folks moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald. I will, I will just say that I do always, and I, and I encourage all of my colleagues, especially if there's a resolution that's going to be, that people feel is going to be an issue, to always talk to your colleagues. You can always talk to your colleagues, lead sponsors, co-sponsors, to make sure that people are as informed as possible. So thank you, Counsel Fitzgerald. The Chair recognizes Counsel, Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, I just want to thank all my colleagues for their comments. You know, I, I think Counsel Murphy is accurate, these are early days on these state laws that are being proposed, but I think a resolution is appropriate where we're supporting their, you know, these kinds of policies as they get pushed forward and help our state representatives make the argument for why this is needed. I think it's perfectly appropriate we're doing it here. I'm not even sure we'd want to have a hearing on what is happening in the State House, rather I think, you know, as a body, we should be, we should be making the case for why we want to see this with our state representatives. Either way, I look forward to working with all my colleagues on this issue, which I think we agree is very important, especially at this time. So I'll leave it to Counsel Mihia, get the last word here maybe, but I look forward to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call on Counsel Murphy first. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to go on record that there have been several conversations with colleagues prior to today's meeting, not just before the meeting started. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mihia. Counsel Mihia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I just want to offer to my colleagues that there will be a hearing on March the 10th on the Trust Act, and while it might not be part of the conversation that you want to be having today, that there will be an opportunity for conversations to continue regarding issues of safety and how we support our immigrant community. So your voices still can be heard in a different space, so I just want to acknowledge that. And I, I'm going to rise again and thank my colleagues for not blocking us and giving us the opportunity to vote on something that we all deeply care about. And, you know, I would not be Counsel Mihia if I'm not the, always the one that is going to say some things that may make people feel uncomfortable, but that's what I do. Is that, the fact of the matter is, is that when we're looking at issues of this particular situation, it is immigrants of color that are under attack right now, okay? And I think it is easier for us to stand up and fight for immigrants when it feels less controversial, right? And right now, I'm here to speak unapologetically for immigrants right now who are under attack, and those are Haitians, Venezuelans, you know, Dominicans, like immigrants of color, and we need to demonstrate to them that we are here for them. So I am going to ask my colleagues again, when we say we want to fight for people, this is an opportunity to demonstrate what that fight looks like. So I'm looking for a overwhelmingly unanimous vote on this resolution, and then I'm also looking to all of y'all to show up on May, on March the 10th, when we're going to talk about the Trust Act. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think that the issue is bigger than, than municipal level than us, right? To Counsel Mihia's point, when it comes to immigration, Europeans don't come in the same, with the same status as an African or West Indian or South American. They typically have to cross over because the lottery numbers are vastly inequitable. So Europeans are allowed more with visas and long-term permanent statuses, and when they come in, they already have their status, and so they don't face the same typical issues that folks of color would. And so when you look at people facing immigration issues, the vast majority are black and brown. And so the immigrant population then becomes sort of noted or known as, you know, people of color and not, so like, you know, Brazil, everything South America, anything Central America, anything outside, the brown world, when they come in. It's, it's, it's easy for us to like stand here and one, support an issue that, you know, we don't feel this is too controversial. It's controversial because it's on TV, but there have been issues in this chamber where folks had a really hard time voting on. And then, you know, I, I remember back then, folks having a bunch, a lot of reasons why they weren't going to support children being bombed. And today, it's easier to talk about an issue that, you know, your political views or seats are not as compromised. And I just wanted to extend, I guess, grace to all of you to say that situations are difficult and everyone is sort of in this self-preserving mode, where you stand up and you say that you can't vote because of certain reasons, whether it be educating yourselves more or learning. But really, there are other reasons, right? Because it always comes down to self-preservation, and every single counselor here is guilty of it, including myself. So I would say none of it is personal, and I would implore you to just vote the right way because of people suffering. Being an immigrant myself who faced deportation and being on a list, you are targeted, you are persecuted, you are hunted down, you can't imagine what that feels like. And now you have children of immigrants here, Irish children of immigrants here, and West Indian children, child of immigrant here, Dominican, Italian. Not one of us actually is quote-unquote African-American, and if you're white, you're a child of immigrant. So you're not, you're all immigrants if you're not Native American. So it's just an interesting, very oxymoronic conversation to talk about immigrants as though that they are others, as though that they're removed from us, far removed, and yet they, we are them. And so I hope that everyone walks out of here understanding that, I understand you're doing the best that you can to preserve yourself, your livelihood, your seat. I definitely understand hardcore, but I hope you vote the right way. And I forgive you for not having voted the right way in the past when it was to save children. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Councillors Weber, Louie Jean, and Mihia seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket Number 0619. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0619. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mihia.
C.
Counsel Mihia, C. Counsel Murphy.
No.
Counsel Murphy, no. Counsel Pepe.
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana.
No.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. Counsel Warral.
Yes.
Counsel Warral, yes. Ten votes in the affirmative and two in the negative.
Thank you. Docket Number 0619 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket Number 0622?
Docket Number 0622, Counselors Louie Jean and Mihia offer the following: Resolution denouncing the rollback of temporary protective status for Haitian, Venezuelan, and other designated communities.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Chair recognizes Council President Louie Jean. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel Warral. May I suspend the rules and add Counsel Coletta Zapata as the third original co-sponsor?
Seeing inherent no objection, Counsel Coletta Zapata is so added. Counsel President Louie Jean, you have the floor.
Thank you. We today held a rally in solidarity with our immigrant communities, and I want to thank all of my colleagues for being there. I want to thank IFSI, Dr. Gabo for being there, I want to thank Pase Kiki of the Haitian-Americans United for being there. I also want to thank Lawyers for Civil Rights for filing the lawsuit to protect our Venezuelan and our Haitian residents who will be impacted negatively by the Trump Administration's decision to denounce, to, to cut temporary protective status. Last week, we denounced the Trump Administration's actions with respect to veterans. We denounced the Trump Administration's actions with respect to cuts to the National Institute of Health, and today, we denounced their actions with respect to canceling temporary protected status for our Venezuelan and Haitian brothers and sisters. And so this is not a new issue for this council. We voted unanimously on the leadership of Counsel Mihia, Counsel Coletta Zapata last term in support of temporary protected status, and I am grateful for the work that this council has done, and grateful for all of my colleagues who wanted to join as co-sponsors on this because this is such an important issue. People with temporary protected status are here legally, they are our residents, they are upholding our healthcare industry, they are our bus drivers, they are, they are people who are in every way contributing to our economy, who have legal permission to be here, who have, in every way are paying taxes and who are our residents. And so I want us to not waver in who we are in supporting TPS. These are people who are fleeing unimaginable and unsafe conditions, right? It is illegal to draw back, to dial back a status that has already been given to people, extensions that have already been given until next year. And so we are here to say that thousands of Haitians and Venezuelan TPS recipients, along with TPS holders from many other countries, have become integral members of our society, and they are part of our workplaces, they strengthen our communities. The TPS program was extended to Haiti in 2010 due to ongoing violence, and violence that I am so saddened is still happening today, beyond what people can believe, beyond what anyone should have to go through. And without doing a country's assessment on the conditions that currently exist that have worsened, to cancel TPS is a slap in the face of so many of our residents. Counsel Mihia and Counsel Fernandez Anderson spoke to this. Racial animus is behind what we are seeing here. Racial bias, especially for our black and brown immigrants and people who are TPS holders. Close to 500,000 Haitians nationwide depend on TPS protections, and Venezuelan nationals, numbering up to 600,000 under TPS, have fled similar severe social, political, and economic upheaval. And so I am asking for suspension and passage, I am asking for my colleagues to stand with us again like we did at the end of last year when Counselor Mihia and Counsel Coletta Zapata and myself stood in strong affirmation of temporary protective status. May we do so again today? And I just want to say to my Haitian community, merci un peu pour tout travail nous faire ma place chaque jour pour nous tenter ensemble avec nous parce que nous-mêmes, nous c'est Boston. Our immigrant communities, we are Boston. Haitian, Venezuelan, Colombian, Dominican, wherever you come from, this is our collective city. That is the message that our mayor is sending right now in DC, and that is a message that we will continue to send collectively as a body, because we know that we don't work here on the city council without the help of our immigrant residents. And so this is an issue that matters so deeply to our community, and I just thank you all for being here and always centering us every day in the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Mihia, Counsel, you have the floor.
Mr. President, Chair, and thank you to my colleague in this fight. We were recently on a panel discussion around the relationship between Dominican and Haitians, and whenever I have an opportunity to rise up in support of the Haitian community, I always say, aqui presente, because it is modeling that leadership and that behavior that is so important in these conversations. So I just want to say thank you to you for your ongoing partnership in that space. And I'm proud to stand alongside President Louie Jean and Counsel Coletta, because this is personal. We're talking about people who are the backbone of our city, our healthcare workers, our childcare providers, the folks who keep our restaurants and small businesses running. These are our neighbors, our friends, and our family. Rolling back TPS for Haitians, Venezuelans, and so many others is not just cruel, it is reckless. It puts thousands of people at risk of deportation, people who have been here for years, raising families, contributing to our local economy, and building communities right here in Boston. We can't sit back and stay quiet while federal policies threaten to tear families apart and destabilize our entire neighborhoods. Boston is a city built by immigrants, and we know that our strength is in our diversity, and we're going to keep showing up to protect our people no matter where they come from. So I ask my colleagues to join us in standing up, speaking out, and sending a clear message that we will not let our immigrant communities be discarded, devalued, or disrespected. And I think this is an opportunity to really uplift and understand the power of our microphone. I always say this, that I am not your voice, I am your microphone, and there's so many people who are afraid to speak up or to show up, and this is an opportunity for us to be responsible in this moment and amplify their voices. So I am here to do just that, and I encourage all my colleagues to stand in solidarity with us as we continue to fight the good fight. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Vice Chair, and it's been so beautifully articulated by my colleagues in this work, but I am proud to be a co-sponsor of this, proud to represent many TPS holders in East Boston, from Honduras, El Salvador, Venezuela, and Haiti, and so many other places. These folks have fled armed conflict, risk of violent persecution, natural disasters, and other humanitarian crises. They are, I think, we have 450,000 TPS holders, and it is incumbent upon us to stand up for them in the face of these, again, regressive policies that are being put forth down in Washington. A lot of these folks in my district are community leaders, and very lucky to have Gabriela Ramirez, who was a community leader in her own right, from East Boston, and her mother is a TPS organizer, Anna Alonso, Julio Perez, so many others, but they are business owners, they pay taxes. I think it's misinformation that's put out there that TPS holders or immigrants don't pay taxes, they do. And so for the, for the government, for the federal government, to say that we are leaving you high and dry, even though you've come here in search of a better life, in search of economic prosperity, the fact that they have helped build this country, this city, and our neighborhoods, it really is a slap in the face to them. So I'm proud to stand with them every day, and I want to thank my colleagues for including me on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you. I rise today to express my support for the resolution denouncing the rollback of temporary protective status for Haitians and other communities that we have here in our great city. This resolution addresses a critical humanitarian issue that profoundly impacts many residents in our city. I know I've shared this story before, but I have visited Haiti twice in the 70s. I had a family member who was an ambassador. It is a beautiful country and with beautiful people, so that is something that always stays with me and my family. Temporary protective status has long been a beacon of hope for individuals escaping armed conflicts, environmental disasters, or other extraordinary conditions. Terminating TPS for nations like Haiti and Venezuela, which continue to face significant instability, contradicts the program's foundational humanitarian intent. TPS recipients are integral to our local economy. In Boston and across Massachusetts, many have resided here for years, contributing as business owners, employees, and community leaders. Revoking TPS could lead to economic hardships and disrupt the fabric of our neighborhoods. Courts have previously addressed the termination of TPS. Notably, lawsuits have challenged abrupt endings of TPS for certain nationalities, arguing that such actions lack adequate justification and violate procedural norms. Boston, with its rich tapestry of cultures, stands to lose significantly if TPS is rescinded. The potential loss of community members could strain public services, housing markets, and local economies. And more importantly, will lose wonderful neighbors. This council has a history of supporting TPS holders. In 2024, we adopted a resolution urging federal authorities to extend-- we adopted a resolution urging federal authorities to extend TPS, recognizing the invaluable contributions of these individuals to our city's fabric. By endorsing this resolution, I believe we reaffirm our commitment to humanitarian values, protect the rights of vulnerable populations, and ensure the continued prosperity and diversity of our communities. So I am proudly going to be voting yes on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peppin, Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to my colleagues for submitting this resolution. I was definitely someone that wanted to be a co-sponsor on this because of the proud community that I represent in District 5. I know that they've been introduced already, but I do want to give another shout out to Dr. Gabo and Pastor Kiki, who are just so strong community leaders in the Haitian community. In District 5, we have a lot of residents with what, TPS status, that right now are very scared. And I know, I want to give kudos also to Council President Louis Jen for her leadership that she does in our community, to make sure that she's advocating for them. And my office has actually received emails and phone calls of parents that are scared to send their kids to school. In Matapan, we have the Matahan School, which is the first bilingual program to learn Haitian Creole and English in the entire country. And I was able to have a conversation with Superintendent Skipper of what can we do as a city to make sure that those parents feel supported when they're sent into kids to school, to know that they're going to be okay? And that's why I'm very proud of this resolution, because that's the message that we need to put forward, that no matter your status, that you're going to be okay. But specifically for those with TPS, because they are here legally protected by the United States government. Why is it that we are taking that back from them after we know that they left their country because they're scared and instability? And things that, we don't even know what they're going through, but we know that they chose Boston as their new home. So let's make sure that we continue to do that. And I urge our federal government to work on a program to give members of those that have a TPS status, to give them a chance to become US citizens, because they're working here. They're paying their taxes. I know a family that has had TPS for about 20 years now, and they own businesses, and they pay their taxes, they own a home, and they're still not US citizens. Let's make sure we work on that. Thank you for the sponsors of this. I will be voting yes today. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I wanted to highlight something that's personal to me. In 2009 and 2010, I was deployed, meaning I was living in Cuba for 13 months on the southern part of Cuba, in Guantanamo. And it's probably 70 or 80 miles or so from Haiti. And during that period of time, I was in Guantanamo when the Haiti earthquake hit. And I want to recognize the, certainly the survivors, but those that were lost in that terrible, terrible earthquake. But I also want to recognize the men and women of the US military that provided humanitarian assistance during that critical period. And the closest airport to Port-au-Prince is actually Guantanamo, one of the closest, I should say, is Guantanamo. But the closest port really is Guantanamo. And the only way you could get supplies into Port-au-Prince was through this base. But I was able to participate in the relief efforts, and I don't want to promote myself, but I want to acknowledge the others that participated in this relief effort and the work they did to ensure that food, medicine, supplies could get to Port-au-Prince, because they could not get there any other way but sending them through, sending an airplane so that they could land at the airbase and then be transported by Navy ship into Port-au-Prince. So I want to recognize the humanitarian relief effort of the United States and the Red Cross, the International Red Cross, for the tremendous support they provided, especially during a difficult period of time in Haiti. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to shout out some of my friends that I know that are dealing with a lot right now. Molly, Pityon, Claudia, and Rico. You're in my thoughts and prayers. And I'm not sure where it began. I don't know if it was out of my ignorance of the love for Zook, that I started thinking about how much I love Haitians. And then I realized that Kostaf is not from Haiti. So either way, it led me to Haiti and my affinity to Haitian people. And, but I do have to be serious in this. Of course, I'm rising in support. Just wanted to bring a little light to this. I met some friends of mine a few months ago in doing some fundraising or donation drives to these hotels. And then started like working on projects, like where we go places and do things for people. And some of the stories that you hear, you have no, you're not ready to receive it. This, one of these friends that I've listed showed me a picture and was just telling me about his daughter and his son, and his son. And he's only, he's just 28. They're in a shelter. And he said, I said, what about where, who are they with? They're with my sister. Okay, but where does sister live? But they lost their home. And this is all in Portuguese, by the way, because I don't speak Haitian Creole. And so they're explaining to me. And then he said, well, here, see. I said, where's your brother? He said, see, I told you, my brother is gone. And in his little Portuguese, I understood the brother was gone when I saw a picture of a burnt body of his brother. And so to be able to, the only proof that you have is for someone to send you a picture of your brother, a burnt body, overseas. And all your mission is to work to be able to send enough money to find a new shelter for your babies so that they can eat. Again, you, we have no idea, like these many other immigrant populations that I used to work with and stories that I have. And I'm sure other people have these stories, but I just wanted to shout them out, because just this weekend, I was with them in applying for jobs and things like that. So the, I understand that we're in our cozy seats and that no matter what we say, it doesn't do, it's not enough. A resolution is not enough. But I hope that it brings some sort of comfort to people's hearts to understand that Boston is with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on the matter? Just want to say thank you to Counselor President Louis Jen, Counselor Mejia, and Counselor Coletta Zapata for introducing this resolution. In these challenging times, many immigrants, particularly Haiti and Venezuela, face profound uncertainties due to recent policy changes. It's imperative that we stand in solidarity with these communities. I want to thank all the organizations at the center of this fight, and you guys have been at the center of this fight for a long time, for providing crucial support and resources. And Counselor Peppin reminded me of a experience I had at one of the high schools that I went to in the beginning of the year. And when I was leaving on my way out, one of the teachers ran out of the room, stopped me and the principal. It was, you know, next, you know, close to tears. And she said that one of her students, or two of her students came up to her and said, "I probably won't see you tomorrow." And that was the fear that a lot of our, well, some of our students were facing because of the regressive policies that are coming from Washington. And I think that, you know, just hearing from our local officials and from this body, on, you know, us being leaders and at the forefront of the line of defense when it comes to local government, that these resolutions, they speak volumes to our teachers, to our students, and to the people in our community. So I fully support this resolution and remain committed to ensuring Boston continues to be a welcoming and supportive city for all. And you know, like Counselor Mejia says, all means all. So Counselor President Louis Jen, oh yeah, add their name. When anyone would like to add their name. Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, oh, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and please add the Chair. Counselors Louis Jen, Mejia, and Coletta Zapata seek suspension of the rules and adoption of Docket Number 0622. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0622. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Jen. Counselor Louis Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket Number 0622 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket Number 0622 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, can you please read Docket Number 0611?
Docket Number 0611, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Petition for a special law, an act directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officers for Giselle Mello.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a homeroom petition.
Sorry. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This homeroom petition seeks an age waiver for Giselle Mello, allowing her to fulfill her lifelong dream of becoming a Boston police officer. Giselle is a 42-year-old combat veteran who has dedicated nine years of service in the US Army, bringing discipline, leadership, and resilience, qualities that would make her an exceptional officer. She's a Magnum cum laude graduate of UMass Boston, fluent in Spanish and English, and deeply committed to community policing. Despite setbacks, including a pregnancy and an injury that delayed her previous attempts, she has never given up on serving her city. At a time when Boston is facing police staffing shortages, granting this waiver would allow the department to gain a highly qualified, dedicated, and mission-driven recruit. So I'm looking for suspension and passage of this homeroom petition. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to support the maker's request for passage of the docket as we await passage from the State House of a previous homeroom petition that this council passed and signed by the mayor that increases the maximum age requirement for the Boston Police Department as a way to recruit and get more folks on the police force. So I will be recommending passage on this docket and the next docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to Counselor Worrell for bringing this forward. I want to acknowledge Counselor Worrell for doing that. We must be a body that supports returning veterans. And this is just one way we can do it. And it's a small way that we can support a veteran. More work needs to be done. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Worrell, the suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 0611. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0611. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, yes. Nine votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. This docket has, this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Docket Number 0612?
Docket Number 0612, Counselor Worrell offered the following: Petition for a special law, an act directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for police officers for Jonathan Telford.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This homeroom petition seeks an age waiver for Jonathan Telford, allowing him the opportunity to serve as a Boston police officer. A little bit about Jonathan. He's a 42-year-old Boston, native Bostonian, who has dedicated himself to strengthening relationships between law enforcement and the communities they serve. With a bachelor's degree in both criminal justice and human services, he has developed a deep understanding of law enforcement policy, social services, and community outreach, a combination that would make him an exceptional officer. Instead of applying earlier, he chose to invest time in his community, build relationships, and gain firsthand insight into public safety's challenges to ensure he would enter the profession as a well-rounded leader and advocate. So I'm seeking suspension, suspension and passage for this docket. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Worrell seeks suspension of, oh, Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just want to thank Counselor Worrell for sharing their descriptions and how they're wonderful residents of the City of Boston. I know that we are waiting for the passage to come up. In the past, we've called them in, and it's very vulnerable for them. And I feel as though this is a much more respectful way, knowing that you've already met with them, talked to them, and sharing their, you know, contributions that they've already made. So definitely looking forward and maybe making sure all of us advocate that that gets passed up at the State House, because us as a body definitely has said to just raise the age overall, because we have many willing and able residents who want to join our police force, which we know we need more of them. So thank you.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Just want to make sure I don't miss anyone. Okay, great. Thank you. Docket numbers, Counselor Worrell seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 0612. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 0612. Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Jen.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Jen, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, yes. 10 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket Number 0612 has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Docket Number 0613?
Docket Number 0613, Counselor Coletta Zapata offered the following: Petition for a special law, an act relative to the Zoning Board of Appeal.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Today, I am proud to propose a homeroom petition seeking to modernize and reform the Zoning Board of Appeals in Boston. This legislation aims to improve transparency, representation, and accountability within the board, ensuring a fair and more accessible zoning appeals process for all residents. A new iteration of this proposal embeds stronger council oversight of the independent board, requiring members to provide justification for variances granted in deviation from hardship standards both in state law and in Boston zoning code. Additionally, it seeks to expand the board by adding an environmental protection expert, a civil rights expert, as well as representation from both a homeowner and a renter. The ZBA, as we all know, plays a critical role in shaping the character and development of our communities and influence how our neighborhoods evolve. By enacting these reforms, we are creating necessary council oversight of a zoning board of appeals process that ensure all residents have a voice in shaping their communities and zoning decisions reflecting the diverse needs and interests of people who call Boston home. This homeroom petition comes following concerns with the limited oversight of zoning variances and discretionary approvals with no formal mechanism to assess compliance with hardship standards. Additionally, this comes from months of frustration on behalf of myself following the approval of variances for projects that disregard Plan East Boston. A zoning plan developed over five years in collaboration with the community to shape Boston's future and establish a sustainable and predictable framework for development. It should also be said, in 2021, this council approved a similar docket sponsored by my predecessor. However, this goes a bit further to embed council oversight. As part of this proposal, if it is passed, the board would be required to produce and publish a report to this body that would go to the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee with a detailed explanation of each variance that does not meet the hardship standards set forth in state law or zoning code. It also creates and establishes a variance review panel where members of this body, the Inspection Services Department and the Planning Department, as well as a zoning or in real estate expert, will review and audit the various variance approvals and issue findings on compliance with zoning laws and equity in the applications of variances across the city of Boston. This has been something that my community has been calling for in East Boston, again, just given the complete disregard for new zoning that we just created together. And so I look forward to the conversation. I'm sure there will be many discussions, hearings, working sessions, and I look forward working sessions, and I look forward to participation from my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta Zapata. The Chair recognizes Council Mejia. Council Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to give a shout out to Council Coletta Zapata for bringing this. I'm really excited to see us having this conversation. I know that there have been several folks who have tried to pass, go through the zoning process and have been met resistance. I always go back to Juan Chavez and his experience over the last few years, and it wasn't until we stepped into the process and helped him understand kind of like the way other folks have been doing their approval processes. And so I'm really happy that we're gonna audit and revise how we do this, because this has been an issue that a lot of folks, particularly folks who have language access issues, immigrants, people of color who have now started to see the opportunities of building and, you know, creating additional dwelling units or maybe even just all this stuff, right? I think that giving them an opportunity to... or giving us an opportunity to have more oversight, I think will give people an opportunity to feel more like they can trust the process. And I think that this is definitely a step in that direction. So excited to see you bringing this and looking forward to participating in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Mejia. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Peppin, Santana... Santana, Weber, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0613, will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0614?
Docket number 0614, Councilor Peppin offered the following: Order for a hearing to establish the Fairmont Ave Arts and Cultural District in Hyde Park.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Peppin. Council Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. May I add Council President Loujen as the second original sponsor?
I'm so added. Council Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today, I'm filing a hearing order to begin the process of recognizing a very important arts and cultural corridor in my district. Fairmont Ave in Hyde Park is one of the oldest commercial corridors in Boston's youngest neighborhood and has been a central vein in Hyde Park's economy. Antonius Bacari, Intriguing Hair, Rincon Caribeño, Park 54, the many theaters in our district, well-known Hyde Park businesses, and each of them located right in the heart of Fairmont Avenue. What is extra special is the number of arts-inspired businesses and organizations that call Fairmont Ave and nearby streets home. The Riverside Theater Works, Canva Studio Boston, and the Switch Co-op are just a few of the businesses that contribute to a strong arts community in Hyde Park. And we can always do better to elevate these important sectors of our community and safeguard the important role they play in the community. I want to thank Pat Tierney and Insight Realty and Marietta Alfini of Riverside Theater Works for passionately advocating for Fairmont Ave to receive a special designation as an arts and cultural district. Hyde Park is going to see a lot of growth in the coming years, and my hope is that this designation centers art, culture, and history in whatever changes come. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Peppin. Uh, this is one of my favorite corners of my neighborhood. It's a commercial center in our neighborhood and from the Switch Co-op, where I buy artwork, to the Riverside Theater Works, where they have great, great shows, to our restaurants, Park 54, Antonius Bacaro, Rincon, so many that are right there. They are doing such great work. And having them as a cultural district would help to provide them with more support. And so I just want to shout out to all the great community leaders who are doing the work to bring out the arts in Hyde Park. And, you know, there's so many young kids who go to the Riverside Theater Works. There's so many artists who find home and joy at the Switch Co-op. So I want to thank Council Peppin for filing this and seeing what we can do for that little very special corner of Hyde Park that is Fairmont Avenue. Uh, the Chair recognizes Council Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to rise to thank Council Peppin. I couldn't think of a better little spot on Fairmont Avenue as a designation for an arts and cultural district. They do a wonderful job there with all of the current small businesses, the theater works. They do wonderful neighborhood events in that area. And one thing I did learn early on when I came on the council that there's very few arts and culture districts across our city, and they do, like Council Loujen just mentioned, this will give them some benefits and support to grow that wonderful arts and culture they have there. So thank you for being a strong district council and advocating for that. I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Council Peppin, gray file, of course, I'm in support. I rise just to express, you know, how this can all connect, you know, with the opportunity that is presented here in Boston of creating these different sectors, business corridors, rather, art corridors and business districts, where we can connect, for example, your district or your art district to Uplands Corner Art District, to Nubian Square Art District, and so forth and so on. But not only that, but creating that, you know, the tour bus that I mentioned, the back and forth, creating that cross-marketing opportunity, cross-cultural opportunities where folks from different races and backgrounds can interact on these ventures, hopefully all connected to the biggest driver of revenue, which is tourism. And so it's important for us to do this and digitize this in a way that it's accessible and make it so that it's equitable. But it's also a beautiful thing, because you get to not only activate art, install arts, but also preserve space, culture, and history and identity, hopefully fighting displacement on some levels as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay. Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Flynn, Santana. Uh, okay. This docket, docket number 0614, will be referred to the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0615?
Docket number 0615, Council Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing on regulation of transportation network companies, TNCs, by the City of Boston and Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, I'm filing a hearing order to discuss regulating transportation network companies, TNC, by the City and Boston Police Department. TNCs have become an integral part of our overall transportation system. We see them on our streets every day. Many use these rideshares, such as Uber or Lyft. While very convenient, we have also heard from residents across the city about this evolving industry and the challenges it poses on public safety, pedestrian safety, traffic congestion. Let me focus on public safety. Last week, a young woman was allegedly sexually assaulted by her rideshare driver when traveling from an establishment restaurant in South Boston to her home in South Boston. The driver is currently held without bail. In 2018, a driver was charged with exposing himself in the downtown crossing area. 2015, another driver was convicted of aggravated rape, kidnapping, assault and battery. As a city, we must ensure the safety of all of our residents who use rideshare services. Currently, Massachusetts requires a two-step background check for those who want to drive for a rideshare company. However, there is no requirement for rideshare drivers to undergo fingerprinting or to register with the City of Boston and/or the Boston Police Department. In New York City, for example, rideshare drivers are required by the City of New York and the Taxi and Limousine Commission, TLC, to submit their fingerprints in addition to background checks. In Mass... And here in Boston, the Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities is the body that regulates TNCs. But I think there is a precedent for the Boston Police Department to play a large role in regulating and providing oversight on public safety issues regarding this in our city. The Boston Police Department Hackney Carriage Unit oversees taxi cabs in the city, and I believe a discussion is warranted with our state partners to explore the merits of transferring public safety and oversight functions to the City of Boston. As I mentioned, currently, that jurisdiction is with the state, the State Department of Public Utilities. Boston Police does not oversee them. Rideshares are now... The ridership is now back on the rise, given that 18 million riders... rides originated from Boston, 50,000 per day, with 13 million rides being local trips. Given the sheer volume of rideshares that operate in Boston, we need stronger municipal oversight on TNCs, including in the form of a personal registration, license, and fee for drivers to operate in Boston due to continued public safety concerns. It is worthwhile to discuss prohibiting out-of-state operators from ridesharing in the City of Boston due to our existing traffic crisis. The lack of designated TNC pickup and drop-off areas or adherence to them often results in vehicles pulling up in the middle of the street, highlighting the safety risk for all road users due to blocked travel lanes. And here's my final point, and I can't stress this enough. The Boston Police does not have jurisdiction or oversight on Uber and Lyft, in whether it's major cities or major streets, I should say, such as Broadway or other areas of Boylston Street and Newbury Street. I often see, if I'm out with my wife at times on Broadway, I often see rideshare vehicles pull up to a restaurant, and mostly young women. Will get in, sometimes there'll be four or five SUVs waiting for someone that ordered a rideshare, Uber or Lyft, and the person unfortunately might be under the influence of alcohol. And they will kind of jump in, at times that I have seen, jump into an SUV. It may or may not be the one they had. I think this is a very unsafe practice. I know it's not supported by many people, but I do think Boston Police need to play a critical role in the jurisdiction and oversight and safety of our residents. And it's something that, again, want to be respectful to my colleagues and to city officials, but I'm not going to give up on this issue. And I'm going to stay on top of this issue, because I have to do my due diligence to ensure that public safety issues are addressed. I'm not comfortable with the process right now. And I just can't sit back and do nothing about it. And I hope I... I'm not offending anybody, but it's just something I can't let go of until the changes is made. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Weber. You have the floor.
Yeah, I thank you to the, I don't know, the maker. But I just think there's a very simple solution for how to, you know, regulate this industry and protect the public safety, and that's for these companies to classify their drivers as employees. They're clearly employees of Uber and Lyft. They would not... You know, these people make minimum wage while Uber and Lyft make billions of dollars, you know, with this workforce that we've allowed to continue to be misclassified, because these companies are so huge and they provide a cheap benefit to the city. So, you know, I think we should continue to advocate for proper classification of the drivers. The drivers will be protected, and the companies will be obligated to provide the kinds of protections that we want them to. So, thank you.
Thank you, Council Weber. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their names? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0615, will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0616?
Docket number 0616, Council Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss and establish guidelines for the filing and adoption of council resolutions.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Murphy. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As promised at last hearing, I said I was going to file something like this, so here it is. Recent council sessions have highlighted the need... Recent council sessions have highlighted the need for clarity regarding the scope and content of resolutions, particularly concerning matters beyond the council's legislative authority. Instances such as debates over resolutions related to municipal employee demotions, contracts, and labor policies have led to concerns about overstepping our legislative boundaries. And I appreciated when colleagues did bring those concerns up. Resolutions that we have brought up recently that addressing paid sick leave policies for city employees have raised questions about the extent of our legislative authority in personnel matters. Resolutions recognizing cultural observances, such as Dominican Heritage Month and Women's History Month, have fostered community pride and unity. And discussions about raising flags over City Hall Plaza to honor cultural heritage, like the Italian flag raising, present opportunities to celebrate our city's diversity while remaining within our purview. I believe that if, when we have this hearing, that we'll be able to review current practices and have the ability to analyze recent resolutions to identify patterns where council actions may have exceeded our jurisdiction, and to establish clear guidelines so we can develop criteria for future resolutions, focusing on city-specific matters and avoiding entanglement in federal and international issues that fall outside of our legislative scope. I also, and most importantly, think it will promote consensus on this body. It will create a framework that encourages broad support for resolutions, minimizing instances where members feel compelled to abstain from voting due to jurisdiction concerns, like Council Tanya Fernandez Anderson. Thank you. You addressed that earlier, and you are right. And be it further ordered that the committee shall solicit input from council members to inform the development of these guidelines. So clearly, it will be us, this body, who talks this through and discusses like we did with the non-disclosure agreements, in that we can report back and discuss as a full body where we want to go with this hearing order. So I'm looking forward to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Flynn, Mejia, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0616, will be... Okay, okay. I'll do it again. My dad always tells me that I speak too fast, and he's been telling me that since I was young, and so I'm still working on it. Okay. Uh, Mr. Clerk, could you please add... Did you get the names?
Braden, Fernandez Anderson.
Yes. I think, raise your... Please, to my colleagues, if you want to add your name, please raise your hands again to the mic. Please add Councilors Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Santana, Weber, Worrell, Mejia. Please add the chair. This docket, docket number 0616, will be referred to the Committee on Rules and Administration. Mr. Clerk, can you please read docket number 0617?
Docket number 0617, Council Flynn offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding TNC rideshare arrests.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Council Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I filed this 17F to obtain more data and information regarding arrests relating to TNCs, Uber, Lyft, specifically violent and sexual assault against a passenger. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Council Flynn, the suspension of the rules and passage of the docket number 0617. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0618?
Well, the counselor is not here.
Oh, okay. So we'll skip that and come back to it. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0620?
Docket number 0620, Council Fernandez Anderson offered the following: Resolution to embrace and extend heartfelt wishes to the beloved Muslim community in Boston, Massachusetts, throughout the United States and across the globe, invoking blessings upon them as they embark upon the sacred journey of Ramadan, a month revered for its rituals of prayer, fasting, charity, and deep reflection.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Council Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, the, I guess, lunar annual Ramadan, sacred month of Ramadan, is the month where Muslims fast, pray, and give to charity and are in deep reflection of their spirituality or spiritual cleanse. But it's more than that. So scientifically, fasting regenerates your cells. It offers you an opportunity to start over physically, but as well as, you know, allowing you to reflect on those that are without. During this month, we dedicate the entire month to praying, and then at night, we pray what is called tathawir. And it's not just tathawir, the nightly prayer, but also wither prayer with a supplication, asking God to respond to our supplications and reflect. So we believe that in this month that we are forgiven for our... Hopefully forgiven for our sins, we are asking... our sins, we are asking God to forgive us for our sins and sort of a, to start over, a redo, if you will. And so I'm asking that the council suspends and pass to support this resolution to, again, commemorate but also uplift all Muslims in the city of Boston and abroad for a happy Ramadan. And I should have started properly whenever speaking, especially in terms of spiritual practices. And you have to forgive me, if you pray with, if you fast with a Muslim, you will understand my fasting brain today. But I should have started appropriately by asking for refuge with God to bless my words today, that everything that I say, it is for me and that if it's any good comes out of it and it leads you to good, then it is from God. So I pray in the name of God, the most merciful, the most gracious, that we all find peace in our own personal journey, in our own development, to understand ourselves, that we extend grace to one another, to be able to understand each other's humanity, that we, none of us are above reproach and that you, all of you, forgive me if I have offended you in the past year. And I extend myself to educating you further. I understand that this body is well-educated, but I feel that the vast majority does not understand, fully understand Islamic community or its practices. And we, as Muslims, have to do a better job of coming out and educating the public on who we are and what we believe in. So just for the sake of that, I'll say that we are a monotheistic religion who believe in just one God, that there's only one true God, in the Abrahamic God, that first came Adam, then Abraham, and on, and, you know, Moses, then Jesus, and that we believe that Muhammad is the last prophet. We don't worship Muhammad and we don't name God. So if you hear people saying Allah hu akbar, God is the greatest. If you hear people saying Inshallah, God willing, please don't say things like, you know, your God's name is Allah, because Allah is literally two words combined together, the one God, like the God, and it means just God. So I ask you to, I encourage you, more conversations in the spirit of Ramadan, to educating yourselves more about Islam and more about Ramadan and Ramadan Mubarak to all the Muslims in Boston.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson, to our Muslim community and to you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. I wish everyone an easy fast and Ramadan Kareem to our Muslim community here. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please have the chair. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0620. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you, oh, doubt the vote. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 0620, Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata. Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Louzien.
Yes.
Counsel Louzien, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, yes. Counsel Pepe. Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, yes. Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, yes.
Thank you. This docket
Eleven votes in the affirmative.
Eleven votes in the affirmative. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0621?
Docket number, oh, we're going back to Counselor Coletta.
We can, or we, yeah, we can, okay. Well, could you please read docket number 0618?
Docket number 0618, Counselor Coletta Zapata offered the following. Resolution designating in Hero Square in Charlestown in recognition of Major General Joseph Warren.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you all so much for your patience in going back to this docket. Ahead of the 250th Battle of Bunker Hill, we are hoping to make a Hero Square in honor of one of our nation's first veterans. Dr. Joseph Warren was a physician, military leader and a martyr in the American Revolution who died in Charlestown during the Battle of Bunker Hill in 1775. Major General Warren was born in Roxbury and worked as a physician for 10 years before the war. He participated in many skirmishes between revolutionaries and British troops, worked in the provincial congress and inspired American militia to hold their position against superior numbers. During the Battle of Bunker Hill, he arrived in Charlestown just before the battle and joined the militia, ignoring advice to stay away from, to stay away from the battle because of his importance to the cause. He fought in the redoubt until the defenders ran out of gunpowder. He was eventually killed in combat by a British officer. One of my favorite quotes from General Warren is, "On you," excuse me, I can't even read my own handwriting, "on you depends the future of America." There we go. These fellows say, "We won't fight, but by heaven I shall die up to my knees in blood." And this was a major battle that we ended up losing, but was important to demonstrate to the greatest military in the world at the time, the British Army, that we were up to the fight. And Charlestown in itself embodies this resilient spirit, this fighting spirit. And so I'm hoping to pass this resolution so we can designate this Hero Square in Charlestown. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta Zapata. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their names? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please have the chair. Docket number 061, oh, Counsel Coletta Zapata, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0618. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 06
21.
21.
Docket number 0621, Counselor Fernandez Anderson offered the following. Resolution to support addressing the needs of Cabo Verdean Americans in Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Again, you'll have to excuse me. All these things should be done with a smile. And my, I'm so sorry, I'm having a little adjustment issues with today. And so Cape Verdeans are, so before Columbus, I'll start there. Before Columbus, there was Cape Verde. There was Vasco da Gama and a bunch of colonizers who landed on west coast of Africa. And this archipelago made out of ten little islands was actually empty. There was, you know, rumors said that, you know, prior to them arriving there, there was some settlement of fishermen that were, would go back and forth from the continent to the islands. But for the most part, it was not habitated. And then the colonizers, the Portuguese colonizers end up would use it as a port, the transatlantic slave trade port for all of the transatlantic slave trade. And so what would happen is all of the ships would come in to Cape Verde and would stop in Cape Verde and then they would send smaller boats to the continent to grab, to kidnap people and bring them over, torture them, you know, do the whole slave trade thing. Fast forward, Cape Verde became this sort of, like a very adaptable immigrant sort of country where each island has its purpose. So like for Santiago, where I'm from, it would be the island where specifically it would be where the town, you know, like the market where you would go and trade slave. And then there were like other islands that would trade like, you know, tobacco and coffee and other things. Even, you know, materials, India came by, Europe, all of the continents would come and trade there. But eventually, as years would go by, every decade it would suffer famine because the Africans who were being kidnapped and some would fight and rebel and run off to the mountains would eventually suffer famine because there was a lot of piracy. So pirates would come to Cape Verde to try to take over. And because of that, you know, everybody was just destitute to like hunger. And so Cape Verde, being super poor, we had to adapt a lot with suffering famine, again, dating back two centuries back, every decade of famine in Cape Verde, you can imagine. I hear stories, I remember stories my grandmother telling me, even in the 60s where there was famine and we suffered one just in the 90s, by the way, and where they had to eat and with their hands or just scoop up quietly because people would be at the window and they would break your windows to come in. So a lot of suffering. And so folks had to adapt to this very clean country because it, or else you would suffer disease because it's all you had. You could eat or you could be clean. And so immigrants would just, everybody would leave, everybody would leave, everybody would leave. So Cape Verdeans, if you notice, have like this attitude, this disposition of being very adaptive and very hardworking people, very proud people. And so when you ask them how they're doing, they start with the job or they start with, it's okay, all praise is due to God. But this is due to like everybody leaving and always having to mourn their families leaving to the states. And so by the late 1700s, they would come in the whaling ships to Americas. I tell you this history once again, and I know I did it before, a couple of years ago, because it's super important, it speaks to the character and the fabric of who we are as a people, as a country. And so we're not very strong advocates for ourselves. We don't, we naturally default to not speaking, to working hard two, three jobs and getting our own as opposed to speaking up. And so the Cape Verdean community, super hardworking people come in and they're not as resourceful as other immigrant populations. And then there's the other part where if they don't have access, they're not becoming citizens. And I say this to all the immigrants in Boston and worldwide. You have a responsibility to, one, you have your green card, not just to work and send over to your family in your country, but also to become citizens so that you can advocate. But here today, I wanted to, one, thank Monique Wen, who has been working with me and trying to figure out, you know, what, where the disparities are in terms of helping the immigrant population here in Boston, but specifically the Cape Verdean community who has a very unique culture, a very diverse, unique culture, again, taking into consideration that adaptive, you know, sort of mestizo race and culture of ours. So for example, I am 45% Senegalese and the rest is like, you know, some colonial blood and like some Nigeria. And I'm actually, I forget how to say it, is a Hasidic Jew. I actually have some of that. And then I have like some other stuff going on. So like Cape Verde being this melted pot, literally is not a country of its own, but it became that. And then when the Jews were exiled, then a lot of, a lot of the Jews came to Cape Verde, mixed with Senegalese and Africans and other. And so here we are, this people who are constantly receiving an open arm, allowing help or supporting others, but not knowing how to advocate in such a small city like Boston. So this resolution in particularly is to highlight the issues of the lack of, you know, advocacy and the lack of voice in the community and to say, we're here, we contribute, and I don't want to go on on the tokenized, you know, how we contribute to Boston. Of course, we contribute in all areas, but rather, you know, we are here, please, as speaking to my colleagues, advocate for Cape Verdeans, you know, take their vote, but also remember that they are a people that need you and they need you to uplift their voice and support them in advocating for their needs in the community. So as the first Cape Verdean city counselor, I want to ask you to suspend and pass and support all Cape Verdeans in Boston and hopefully that we contribute a little bit more, a little bit better in how we individually look at how we can support the Cape Verdean community. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to thank my colleague, my sister in good trouble, Counsel Anderson, because whenever you speak, you are also educating so many of us. And I think you might say, oh, it's, you know, I've said this before, but I think you need to continue to say it in this chamber because I think it's important for us to always constantly be reminded of the historical context that you bring into this chamber. And as the first Muslim woman, right, to represent here in the city council and as the first Cape Verdean, you also hold, right, a lot of responsibility in bringing those stories into this chamber. And so from everything that you've done since you've been here, you've always stand firm in your convictions, but also always uplifting your people. I just want to say thank you for how you show up here in this space at all times, educating all of us and how we can be better allies. So I just want you to know that I see you, I appreciate you, and I'm here for all of it. And I'm incredibly happy to stand up on this one because I, when I came to this country, people always think that I was either Cape Verdean or Puerto Rican. I was either one of them, depending on who I was hanging out. I'm all of them, okay? But Cape Verdeans in particular were always the community that embraced me the strongest. And I learned so much from the Cape Verdean community. They taught me how to say boke kom pa meya, because I used to work at a shoe store. They taught me how to sell things at Tom and Ken Shoe Store, but they, most importantly, I always used to say I was from Fogo. I don't know why, but I used to say that and I don't want to get people in private upset at me, but I'm saying Fogo. I think it's because I'm a little bit more rough around the edges. I don't know why, but I skewed more on the Fogo side of the island. I don't know, but I just want to name that. I'm Fogo, just in case. But going back to the need, I want to also uplift that Paulo de Barros over at the Cape Verdean Community Center was also my colleague when I was on the English Language Learners Task Force in the city, in Boston Public Schools. And he constantly advocated for the Orchard Garden School to become a dual language and Cape Verdean Creole speaking specifically. And it was through his advocacy that it was my first realization that the Cape Verdean community here in the city of Boston has laid down the foundation for so many other immigrants who have come before them. And so his advocacy in the language access space really helped a lot of the other parents that had been organizing around other needs to understand that the Cape Verdean community is large here in the city of Boston. It is actually one of the largest. You guys own everything down Upphams Corner and Roxbury, just so you all know. And you show up for your people. And I can't believe my time is up, but I just want to say, yes, we need to do more than say that we support our constituents and when we don't, when we have an opportunity to do more around their needs, that we're advocating and passing our budget that reflects those needs. So I'm looking forward to fighting with you alongside whatever you're going to fight for, for the Cape Verdean community. I'm here for it. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I love this resolution representing a large portion of the Cape Verdean community in Upphams and Bowdoin and Meeting House Hill. I am proud to stand here and support this one as well. And I would just like to say, while I do represent many, I do have a favorite, and that would be Jessica Correa in my office. And when we talk about supporting and addressing the needs of Cabo Verdean Americans, she does that every day in her work and I am so proud of her, not only for her people, but she helps all the folks. But I just couldn't thank her enough and I'm so proud of her. So I just want to give her a shout out. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, for advocating for the Cape Verdean community. I also have a large community of Cape Verdeans. The Cape Verdean Association of Boston resides in the district and I've been able to work with Paulo de Barros, whether it's on, you know, turkey drives during COVID, we set up vaccination clinics that he reached out to the Cape Verdean community and also the food pantry. And I know that there has been progress in the English Language Learners and his advocacy that the Lilia Pilot School will now have a CV strand. So we are making some progress, but there's more to be made. So please continue to count me as an ally. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes, I'm going to go to Counsel Murphy and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Murphy?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. It's one of those resolutions that I love. It brings us together. And don't want to just call out one, but I do just want to shout out Denise, who has always been so wonderful to me and a strong supporter of, you know, the Cape Verdean community. And many of you have already said it, but the Cape Verdean community, their value in family and community, it just really shows. And when I'm in community with them, it's just, they just show up in the rain, they show up in the winter, they show up they show up in the winter, they show up when they're needed. They don't want photos, which I love, you know, they don't want to be recognized, they just know that they need to help each other. And I learn from them all the time. And I know that, you know, the faith community there also with Paulo and others really come together. And when they ask the community to show up, they do. And that just speaks volumes to how people respect them in the community. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, for indulging me and I'll be, I'll try to be brief. But I'd be remiss, and you beat me to it, Councilor Murphy, I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge those who came before me and those who are here today. I am the first Cape Verdean city councillor, but I am not the first Cape Verdean to be an advocate or to lobby or to fight for the rights of Cape Verdeans. And so in recognition of the work that Cape Verdeans have done and paved the way, I'd like to thank, of course, Denise Dusansh and Chantel Lima, Paulo Barge and John Barros as well and the family. We also know of Danielson Tavares, who used to work for the city and did a lot of work and now is working with the state. But Jose Correa, Jose, Toni Barge, Jose Lima, Albertino Carvalho, Ivan Carvalho, and I'll be going on Carvalhos because Carvalho is actually my maiden family name. So we'll stop there. But for H Strong, H Strong would not be H Strong without the Cape Verdean women there working and helping and supporting and doing everything that it needs to support, to, to, to lift our H Strong citizens. So, and throughout Boston, our very own Commissioner, Commissioner Tavares for the Elections Department and everyone else. But it would not be a Cape Verdean resolution without speaking to my people, so I'm sorry, Madam, I'm just another minute. [speaking Spanish] Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Fernandez Anderson, for your advocacy on behalf of your community. When you were speaking of your love for the, deep love for the Haitian community reciprocal, my love for the Cape Verdean community in middle school and high school was very involved in our Cape Verdean association and just found a lot of solidarity and commonalities between the Haitian community and the Cape Verdean community as Black immigrants. And so our Cape Verdean community, I think everyone has said it, is so important here to watch City Boston, so maybe we address all of their needs. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Colletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, please have the chair. Councilor Fernandez Anderson seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0621. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed, has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Docket number?
A roll call vote on docket number? She doubted the vote, 0621.
Roll call vote on docket number 0621, Councilor Braden.
Yes.
Councilor Braden, yes. Councilor Colletta Zapata.
Yes.
Councilor Colletta Zapata, yes. Councilor Durkin. Councilor Fernandez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilor Fernandez Anderson, yes. Councilor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Councilor Fitzgerald, yes. Councilor Flynn.
Yes.
Councilor Flynn, yes. Councilor Louzine.
Yes.
Councilor Louzine, yes. Councilor Mahia. Councilor Mahia, yes. Councilor Murphy.
Yes.
Councilor Murphy, yes. Councilor Pepe.
Yes.
Councilor Pepe, yes. Councilor Santana.
Yes.
Councilor Santana, yes. Councilor Weber.
Yes.
Councilor Weber, yes. And Councilor Ral.
Yes.
Councilor Ral, yes. Docket number 0621 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 0621 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, could you please read docket number 0623?
Docket number 0623, Councilor Ral offered the following. Resolution recognizing March 5th as Christmas Addict's Day in the city of Boston.
The chair recognizes Councilor Ral. Councilor Ral, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry, now, I just haven't wanted to turn on your mic today.
Councilor Ral, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I gave a presentation a little bit earlier at the beginning, just speaking to Chris Passattis and his sacrifice that he has made for this country. Also just want to shout out my co-sponsor on the statute, statute hearing order, Councilor Flynn. But I'm just looking to have suspension and passes of this docket. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ral. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Colletta Zapata, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mahia, Pepe, Santana, Weber, please have the chair. Councilor Ral seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0623. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Before we move on to green sheets, does anybody want to add their name to anything while they were out of chambers, while they stepped out of chambers? The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Madam President, may I be added to 0611? And 0612?
Okay. Are you looking to add your name? And are you also looking to add, I see 0611, we voted on?
Yes, please.
Okay.
So yes.
Yes and yes.
Okay. Councilor Fernandez Anderson would like to, would like to vote on docket number 0611. Is there a second? Second? All those in favor of adding her vote, say aye. Aye. Okay. So Councilor Fernandez Anderson's vote is added to 0611. And what was the other docket?
0612.
0612. That's also the same thing. Okay. So Counselor Fernandez would like to move, is there, move to consider her vote, reconsider the vote on 0612? All those in, is there a second?
Yes.
Second? All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay. Counselor Fernandez Anderson, you would like to vote on 0612? In the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do you have that?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Yes, um, thank you. I'd like to add my name to 0623.
Thank you. And you conducted a roll call vote. Okay. Councilor Murphy?
I'd like to be in the affirmative. Thank you.
Okay. You'd like to move to reconsider the vote on docket number 0623? Is there a second? All those in favor, aye. Okay. Councilor Murphy would like to vote in the affirmative on docket number 0623?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. So we're just adding her. Okay. Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add my name to number 0618.
Okay, 0618. And you'd also like to vote on 0618?
Yes.
Did we conduct a roll call? Okay. Your name is added on 0618.
Thank you. And I believe I was out for 0620 as well.
0620. And we did conduct a roll call vote. So Counselor Pepe moves to reconsider the vote on docket number 0620. All those in favor, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of allowing reconsidering of the vote, say aye. Aye. Okay. Counselor Pepe, would you like to vote in the affirmative?
Yes.
Okay. And that's for docket number 0620. Mr. Clerk, do you have that?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Any, is there another docket? Councilor Pepe?
No, thank you.
All right. Councilor Santana?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to add my name and also vote in the affirmative for docket 0611 and 0612.
Okay. We'll take each individually. Counselor Santana moves first to reconsider the vote on docket number 0611. Is there a second? All those in favor of allowing reconsideration of the vote, say aye. Aye. Okay. Counselor Santana would like to vote in the affirmative on docket number 0611. Mr. Clerk, do you have that? Okay. Great. Thank you. Counselor Santana would like to move for reconsideration of the vote on docket number 0612. All, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. Reconsideration is allowed. Counselor Santana, your vote is added in the affirmative to docket number 0612. Anything else?
No. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Ral. Councilor Ral, you have the floor.
Got my mic on this time. I'd like to add my name to 0613.
Okay. 0613. That was sent to the Government Operations Committee. Okay. Your name is added. Mr. Clerk, do you have that?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great. We are now on to green sheets. Does anyone have anything that they would like to pull from the green sheets? Okay. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the clerk that there are four, five late file matters. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the late file matters into the record? Can you, with a breakdown?
Personnel. Absence letter. One from the J.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the late file matters into the record?
First late file matter, absence letter from Counselor Durkin. Dear Counsel, President Louzine, I want to extend my sincere regrets for my absence from today's council meeting. As you read in this letter into the record, I am currently in our nation's capital watching Mayor Wu testify before Congress defending Boston's unwavering commitment as a sanctuary city. Our position that our council unanimously reaffirmed, as you know, the city council doesn't pay for this trip. While I regret missing today's meeting, I remain committed to ensuring Boston's values and priorities I defended. Sincerely, Counselor Durkin.
Thank you. What's matter? Oh. Yeah, one, all at once.
Second late file matter is personnel order, Counsel Louzine. And the third is personnel order, Counsel Louzine for Counselor Flynn. Fourth late file matter is a letter addressed to the mayor and the councilors from Kenzie Bach, Director of the Boston Housing Authority. And the fifth late file matter is the communication from me regarding today's dockets, 0593 through docket number 0603.
Thank you. We will now take a vote to add these late file matters to the record. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, these matters have been added to the record and they will be placed on file. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember that these are for upcoming dates and events. Some birthdays that just passed, one is for Malala Hayes, next Sebastian Pata and Gabriela Ramirez, our D1 Pisces twins. And if any of my colleagues would like to make any announcements, now is the time. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I did just want to stand and thank Councilor Mahia for your leadership at the Second Annual Dominican Breakfast. I, I know when I came back, it started out at the IBW in the morning and it carried back over here to the flag raising. And I did mention this to Councilor Pepe and how it was just a wonderful day and I felt so welcome. So I did just want to uplift also your staff. They worked so hard, they worked so professionally there, it was a lot of work for you to put that on. And when you saw the amount of people, the leaders who came to support you and the whole community, it was just, it was heartwarming. So I just wanted to say thank you for making me feel welcome and it made me want to like stay engaged and, you know, continue on when we came back here for the flag raising. So thank you for that and always thank you for your staff because they do a great job. And also shout out to Councilor Pepe and Councilor Santana. It's great to have three Dominicans here as colleagues on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just something that came up at the hearing on long-term job vacancies. BCYF is having a hiring day on Saturday, March 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the BCYF Shelburne Community Center at 2730 Washington Street. I just wanted to highlight that. It's not in my district, but it came up in the, in the hearing and they could really use all the help they can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more announcements? Okay. We are now moving on to memorials. Would anyone like to uplift a name of anyone who has passed or speak on behalf of anyone who has passed? The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to speak about two neighbors of mine in South Boston that passed away recently. Two wonderful women, active in the community. I want to start first with Elaine Gavin Clarity. Many of you may have known her. I know certainly the clerk does and Ellen does, but she was a staff assistant for Boston City Councillor Bill Linehan and was very active and engaged in South Boston in supporting many charities and nonprofits, including the South Boston Special Kids and Young Adults Program. They provided so many opportunities for special needs children to engage in various programs. But when I think of that, when I think of Elaine, I think of that program because she was always volunteering. So she passed away recently and I had the opportunity to attend the wake and I know, I know the clerk did as well. So I want to, want to say thank you to the clerk. The other woman was a very close friend of mine. Her name was Adrienne Morrissey, Mrs. Morrissey. And she's, her son was one of my best friends. But Mrs. Morrissey was also a wonderful woman who lived her entire life in South Boston, but she gave so much to the community, especially to veterans and military families in the town. She was well-respected, she was well-liked, and she was also active in the South Boston Irish American Society. So I had an opportunity to be at the wake and want to highlight, acknowledge her, but also to let her family know that we, we always respected Mrs. Morrissey for the wonderful woman that she was and the life that she led. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to adjourn on behalf of anyone? Okay. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Councilor Pepe, Jody Schmidt. On behalf of Councilor Flynn, Elaine M. Clarity and Mrs. Morrissey. On behalf of myself, Yvonne Tiboul-Tersilas. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of aforementioned individuals. Moment of silence. Okay. Thank you, everyone. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, March 12th, 2025 at 12:00 noon. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk in the clerk's office and the council stenographer. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. The council is adjourned. Thank you.[1396.33]